Council called the meeting in order for the record is February 1st, 2022 at 4:35 PM. We'll begin this afternoon's City Council work session with real call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Burton. Councilwoman Perro. Councilman Cavanagh. Councilman Borden. Councilman Hoagland. Mayor Simison.
Here. Next item up is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Hoagland. I move approval of the agenda as published.
I have a motion of second to approve the agenda as published. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it and the agenda is adopted. Next up is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
That we have no changes to the consent agenda. I move to approve the consent agenda with the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
I have a motion of second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay. The ayes have it and the consent agenda is agreed to. There were no items moved from the consent agenda, so we'll move on to item 21 under Department Commission Reports, which is Resolution Number 21-2300 and ask Mr. Nary or Ms. Ritchie to come up and speak.
Glad to be back in front of you on this discussion. The mayor asked for us to provide an update and we had sought feedback from all of you in regards to our presentation a few weeks ago and we did get some feedback. So we have some documents in front of you and we did also have those sent to Councilwoman Strater, so she has them as well. So here's kind of where we have landed since our last conversation. I did point out that I thought if you could read the new revised preamble, that would maybe answer some of your questions because we did add a provision in there align that says all policies and any financial procedures with any fiscal impact must be approved by the City Council to be effective. So we had added that at the last iteration that you had since November, I guess, or October as a way to address some of the concerns that have been expressed earlier about the potential potential opportunity for changing policies that maybe are procedures that might be something the council should be reviewing. Councilmember Borden did provide us with a list. I think this is the same list. I remember Councilmember Borden. This is the same ones we spoke about at the last meeting. So based on the mayor's comments saying, you know, if there's particular ones that you have concerns with or would like to see change not not put into this new structure like the way it's been proposed, look those out. Let us have that conversation. So Councilmember Borden did point these back out to us saying, hey, these are the ones I had the concerns with. We did talk about them a couple of weeks ago. I'd still like to explore that option. So what we did in talking with Crystal is looked at it in two ways. And you have two different documents in front of you of the same policy of 5.6. One of them basically states that under the procedure section, there's a red line at the top of that page that basically says changes to these procedures require council approval. So that's a pretty easy fix, a pretty quick fix to add that into the way the structure is currently. So that's one way to do it. The only other way when Crystal and I talked about it, we thought could work. If that's your preference, that's fine too, is we basically essentially pushed them back together the way they were previously. So it does say policy and procedure instead of just policy as the other ones say. So for these 13, they would say policy and procedure and they'd all be in that section of the book that's policy. So if you look at the other document you have for 5.6, you'll see on the front of the page, it says retirement match program, purpose, policy, authority, responsibility. You flip it over, all the procedures and related information. So they would all be in that section of the manual under procedures. So either one we can do if that suits your pleasure, if that's what you want. If you have another idea or another thought on that, or you have a different other other policies that you think you'd prefer in that. Again, I'd like to hear whatever concerns you have and maybe if we can address those, we can do that. So. I don't know if you had anything else to add, Crystal.
Nope, you covered the three options that we wanted to share and get their feedback on.
Also questions, comments? Preferences? Councilman Borden.
See if I summarize this, Spider. Certainly, you bet. Thanks, team. Option one, mush it back together or don't make any changes. Keep it as is. The three options.
That would be a fourth option.
Oh.
So.
What was option?
May I?
Yeah, please.
Okay, so we have the first option, which is to approve what we've put in front of you already without any changes. The second option would be to accept the policy manual the way that we have presented it to you with the updated preamble. And that updated preamble has a statement in there on this back, the second page on the back that says any changes to policies and procedures, specifically procedures with a financial tie to them, has to come back in front of the council. And if that addresses your questions, concerns and comfort level, we can move in that direction. Third option is you have 13 policies. It's the third page of your packet in front of you where we take those 13 policies and we have blended the policy document and the procedure document back into one. We titled it policy and procedure. Therefore, if anything changes in any of those 13 documents, whether it's in procedure or not, it's embedded in the policy. We bring that back forward in front of you for any changes and approval. The fourth option is to keep the separation of policy document and procedure document as presented. On the procedure document at the top for those 13 policies or those 13 procedures, it says changes, any changes to be made to this procedure require council approval, which means we would have to bring it back in front of you for discussion, consideration and approval. Four options. Or as Mr. Nary stated, anything else that you would like to suggest that we consider. But we were hopeful to come forward with some options to address the concerns in an effort to continue to move the policy manual forward.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perro.
So just for clarification, the number two and number three that are proposed, the procedures that are described here, you believe all of those will address the concerns on the page that you provided that Joe had sent, Councilmember Borden had sent with questions. They, you've matched them up such that you you believe that these are the procedures that would be addressed. And so is this, is 5.6 a new section? Or are you just, you're taking the existing session and modifying it to address the specific items that council would like to make sure are reviewed?
Oh, a question.
My question.
Perro, so council member Perro, members of the council, so 5.6 was one of those that was pointed out. It has been altered already in the last year because we added the retirement match program that didn't exist previously. So it's it's in a format like this. And so it, this is simply because again, Councilmember Borden wanted to be sure that the council got to review both the policy and the procedure for for all 13 of these. This was just one of them. Yeah, example of either one that we could do. Again, we would just do the same thing with the other 12. We either push them back together or we create that statement on every one of the procedures.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
At first blush, it sounds like it could be appropriate to do both, that the preamble addition makes great sense. And having the kind of the red top at the top of the procedures also just makes it crystal clear that as to those, I think there's 12 of them, specific items, those portions of procedure do also certainly require council approval to be changed. I think both of those can be part of the solution, not either.
Mr. Borden, I members of the council, I would agree because I think at least from a readability standpoint, when they were talking a year or two, whatever from now, if you don't understand in the preamble which financial policies we're talking about, we highlighted it in the section of the procedures that tells you it's this one. So I would agree with you. I think it does help make it clearer to everyone which ones are require that additional level of review.
Option five.
That's okay. That all works.
Option five work for the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead. So I'm pro.
Sorry, could you run through that one more time?
So yes, certainly. Councilmember Perro, members of the council. So what we will do, so that preamble is already there. We already wrote that in a while back. So we'll just leave it the way it is. And then we will take all 13 of these policies that we've identified and label every one of those procedures with that label that this procedure requires council approval to be changed.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Councilman Perro.
For consistency sake, wouldn't you then? I guess I was under the impression that that these 13 are the comprehensive list of things that will need council approval in the in the procedure and policies manual, or are they?
These are the only ones that have been raised to us as a concern because they all had fiscal impacts. They didn't have, they didn't have anything else that would be what I would consider to be operational needs. They were all, has a fiscal component tied to it because of retirement match or vacation days or whatever. That was why those were identified.
And for clarification, every policy would, that's in the policy section would be counseled. This is just the procedure of ones.
Yes, correct. So does that mean there's going to be a red title over every procedure and every section of the procedure? Because the procedure and policy manuals are going to be separated now into two manuals, correct? So.
Over every procedure.
I think that could then, if somebody's reading through this and they're not aware, it could look, feel inconsistent to to tag some procedures that require council approval and others that do, but we're not tagging them because they're not on this list of 13.
So the intent of the project from the outset was to separate out procedures that don't have, only have operational impact and no fiscal impact. Because again, the procedures tend to change a lot of times because the law changed, regulations changed, rules changed, court changes, changes that require us to be able to change them quickly to meet that standard. And it doesn't have any fiscal impact at the city. It's filing this document, not that one. It's meeting this IRS reg, not this one. So that's why the intent of the project from the outset was to take out procedures that don't have any real need for the council's review because they really are administrative functions on how the city runs and not on what would somehow impact policy or impact the policy decisions of the council. It's simply how to administer some of these things that don't have a fiscal impact.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perro.
I understand that, but that I might not be asking my question clearly. Are these 13 procedures the only ones in the procedure manual that are going to have this label? And are the the only procedures which council, is this the comprehensive list of procedures? Like, that's what I'm trying to find out. This is the comprehensive list of procedures which council, which will come before council as a review in the procedure manual?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Thanks, Phil. Understood some of it might be changes in law, things could come up. I guess I'm kind of surprised we don't have another option to have the council liaison approve procedure changes outside of this list with the highlighted, you know, all caps require council approval. I think like small P procedures, procedures outside of that, maybe should run through the council liaison. Maybe just for a trial period so we could get an idea for the volume of, is this a huge amount of administrative changes that are coming on a regular basis? Or is this something that a council liaison could approve similar to a budget amendment? So if it's outside of this discreet list of the 12, then at least, you know, there's still kind of a, I'm just trying to respond to what I feel like is a council concern about checks and balances. And I just feel like maybe there's a more incremental way to do this. I'm pretty amenable to the will of the group, but I, I just kind of wondering, you know, why we couldn't use the council liaison as kind of a point for procedures outside of these 12.
Mr. Mayor, as a council, Councilwoman Strater, I mean, we could certainly come up with some way to make sure the council's aware. I mean, there's no intent here to do anything you're not going to be aware of. So, like I said, I don't know how many of these change annually on the procedure side. I, I couldn't tell you five or 10 or even that many. Because again, most of it's driven by external forces or internal needs. We had this department handle this in this particular position. Now we'd like this position to handle that documentation or that workflow. So that's usually what's changed. It's just instead of going to person X, it goes to person Y because person Y, now their job is changed slightly and that's what they're doing instead of the other. But that's predominantly what it is. It's not, again, if the law changes, whether or not we get it in front of you next week or the week after, we're going to follow what the law is tomorrow. So we're going to do whatever the law requires us to do regardless of that. What we thought from an ease standpoint, from the council's perspective, again, if you want an update periodically, if you like have the liaison updated, hey, we're looking at changing this procedure here and why? Do you think any concerns you want to bring to the council? That's, that's fine. I mean, with the support departments and it has to predominantly run through HR and secondarily through legal. If we're, our liaison is the council president, we would give the council president a heads up. Hey, they've raised this issue. We need to change this procedure. Again, I mean, I don't want to make it sound like it's very mundane, but it kind of is. I mean, a lot of times it is, here's the form we used to use. Here's the form you now need to use. It used to be electronic or it used to be written. Now it's electronic. So I mean, that's really a lot of the procedural change we've done in the last couple of years. We've tried to create fillable forms. It wasn't very long ago where we had a form, we've, we printed it, wrote on it, scanned it back and emailed it. Now we can just do it online and email it. We don't have to do that because it's silly. So that's a lot of the procedures that changed. It's just the processing of things. It has nothing to do with any impact on finances or anything else. It's simply this goes now to, it doesn't go to Jenny, now it goes to Brad. I mean, that's really a lot of them. So, but if you want us to make the council president aware or the liaison and they say, yeah, nobody's going to care about that, or I'll, I'll talk to the council about it. I'll let you know if that's a big deal. That's fine. I mean, again, it's not a, it had to hide anything. It was trying to create some ease on the operation.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perro, or sorry, Strater.
Um, yeah, thanks. Yeah, I, I think that to me would be the right, I'll just, sounds like a good compromise way of handling it. I don't think, you know, for example, when we need budget amendments, I don't think that city council has been a huge obstacle to getting business done. I know we try not to be. I'd love to just, you know, let's have this list of bolded changes that require council approval. Maybe change the preamble and then if it's something outside of this list, I do think running it through the council liaison for approval makes sense so we can see. It's hard. It's like predict for me all the areas in which you might have an issue with a change in procedure. I can't do that. I don't have a crystal ball, you know? I mean, we're, it's all hypotheticals. A future mayor, maybe not as wonderful as you, Mr. Mayor, or something like that, right? I can't predict all that. It's just too hard for me to, and I just want to respond to concerns of other council members. That to me seemed like a good double check, but that's just my opinion.
Councilors, you, again, I'm, I'm fine with whatever direction you want to go. The reality is at some point in time, someone built a car and they put it all under the council's purview and it shouldn't have been put all under council's purview. I think that's the reality, but it is under your purview right now with your approval. Anything that's got to be changed has to be done this way, even though the reality is it really doesn't or shouldn't have to in a lot of ways. But we can also just leave it as is, move on. And anytime we want to just bring back in front of council and you can all hear if it's relevant. So we just want to move on, quite frankly. So whatever direction you can please provide would be awesome.
I literally had a nightmare about this presentation last night because I couldn't find the list. Crystal wasn't here to hand me the list, so.
In the nightmare.
Yeah. So I, I agree. I get a lot of, a lot of the stuff really was meant to make it easy, simplify operational things that really don't have any impact to city's budget, city's finance, city, any council concern. It is, again, most of the time it's send it here, not there. Don't bring a receipt, bring a receipt, that kind of stuff.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
Just a comment and a question, a comment to your comment. I mean, none of this task came from council. So this whole exercise, we didn't request or task. So if you're not, if you don't have a dog in the fight as to which way we go, that's kind of why we're a little rudderless with five different options, quite frankly. I know we want to get this thing over the finish line, but we didn't create this. The question is.
Just on that, I mean, it was discussed with council. You just don't remember. It's over three years ago when this conversation started and it's predated that two members of the council weren't involved in it, so.
No, I remember that crystal clear. I'm just saying the task came from the executive branch, not the legislative branch.
Correct.
Reason why we struggle with how to get this over the finish line. We're going to get there. Part of the process to get us to this stage, the preamble references the local and I might have maybe just emailed you or like, I don't, about what the local, they were provided, all of this. And what input, if anything, did they provide, any comments that helped come up with the final?
Oh, yeah. As our, as our collective labor agreement requires, we did provide it to them for comment. They do have a time window to comment. There's two different tests in the contract. If it is a mandatory subject of bargaining, which is also a discussion point with the, with the collective labor group and what falls in that category, then they get to comment. If they don't agree, we've agreed to disagree. If they don't agree, we've agreed to disagree, they may not be bound to that policy until the next contract and will make it part of the contract negotiations. If they have no comment or they, it doesn't fall under a, like it's literally a piece of paper, you got to file this one, not that one. So, it's not a mandatory subject of bargaining. They can comment, we can say, no, thank you, or thanks for the input, yeah, we'll change or not change or whatever. Or they have no comment and then we move on. I provided to them, they've had more than 30 days to review it, they have not provided comment. I've reached out to the president and he, he assured me if he had a concern, he'd tell me. Haven't heard back. So, that piece of, of the approval process is complete with the union.
That's important. So, the, the consequence of that is any portion of their, of the changed policy that isn't addressed in their collective bargaining agreement, they're subject.
Yes.
Want to make sure they've had the time to comment and participate.
And, and, and to be, and to be fair, I mean, as a, as, as an entity, they have commented in the past. We have had discussions about policy changes and have followed that exact process of either we don't apply it to you now, we'll discuss it at the negotiation time, or we've negotiated through it, come up with a reasonable solution we all could live with, moved on. So, yeah, they definitely pay attention, they definitely review it, they definitely will comment if they have a concern. As I explained to them, as I explained to all of you, most everything in that book, although it's a lot of pages, is virtually the same as it is today. It's just divided differently. The words are changed slightly only because of language, not because of change in process or procedure, so, or, or policy. So, I, I think they were, they're, again, they didn't respond, so I assume they're satisfied and so that piece has been taken care of.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogue.
I was just thinking through what Councilwoman Schrader had, had brought up about, okay, what about the other ones? Do we do something with council liaisons? And I could go make a case either way. I was looking at 5.3, you know, under Percy. And if there's a change by Percy on what they define as employee eligibility, we will follow that no matter what. And so, it's like, okay? And, and something that big, we'll hear about because it's going to be a big deal if, if they're changing that because that does eventually have a financial impact one way or another on, on, on our employees and our, our city budget. So, yeah, trying to go back with what you were saying, Bill, the fact that, you know, a lot of it is very, very minor or it's something that we have to do no matter what. And, but I, I, I'd want your feedback, Council, on this. Do we for the next six months, maybe a year? Well, if, let's say for the remainder of this year, we say, okay, liaisons and working with the mayor, tell department heads that if there's a procedure change, they run it by their council. If it's not the, the red version, you know, where that's not saying it has to come before council. And then we just see, okay, what's this like? Now, as council president, working with HR, finance and legal, and I might be going waving the red flag later going, this is ridiculous. This is just a bunch of mundane stuff that, don't do this to me anymore. But, but just, just to see if that's, is that an option? And Mayor, would your department heads be willing?
Well, I'm, I'm, I was hoping this would respectfully die without a lack where a second. Because really at that point in time, you've created a, a six mini-mayors. And as a body, you're, that's really the only time you're able to act. And if you're giving yourself authorities to act within approval of underlying processes, procedures or other things, you know, council delegating other people's votes to go determine that something is okay, no disrespect, that's really my purview. You can either delegate it to me, that's appropriate, but I wouldn't delegate it to individuals to make those decisions because that's really not where you guys reside as a body.
And, and Mr. Mayor, I, I understand your argument, but you used the term mini-mayors and that kind of sounded appealing, so, yeah, you didn't help your argument out at all.
If I can get a baton and, and deputize, well, let's have a conversation.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogue.
In seriousness, yeah. I, I mean, that's, that's the dilemma is what is it that really is under the purview of the administration to say, we handle the day-to-day stuff, we, we move it forward? And I, I do want to make sure what council is active in, and I think it's been expressed very well, that it is those major things and those pieces that relate to budgetary items and, and to pieces that really should be a full elected body response. Now, sometimes we may differ on that, but I, I think what we have here, what Bill has brought forward and Crystal have, has proposed, you know, get us to that point. And, you know, it, it doesn't give me any heartburn not to do that with the, the mini-mayor system. It's just, is that something we want to try? But, you know, to your point, I, I don't think it would be something that we would find useful because it is a administrative function. If it's either required or it's very, very routine that we really don't need to be involved in that. So, I'm, I'm, I'm happy and, and I know Councilwoman Schrader likes to, you know, trying out tests and I, I appreciate that about her. But that is something I, we can do without, just move forward with the, what's been put in the preamble or the intro section and red on those other procedures and then we can, we can move forward. Any other thoughts, anything, anything different from that?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
I think that sounded like it might have been option five, which basically the preamble plus the denoted 12 items in the procedures. Do both of those. I think Councilwoman Schrader's kind of collaborative suggestion is a, is a really good one and, and perhaps going forward, approval of procedure changes, approval might not be the right word, but let's be collaborative and meet, work with your liaison and if you're going to change a procedure, at least talk to them about it, keep them in the loop. If something that sounds a little sideways, we can bring it up for us to discuss and say, this one might seem, we don't anticipate it. But if there's something that sounds sideways, let's have collaboration with your council liaison, talk about it. So, it's not a mini-mayor authority change, but, um, that seems to be a very reasonable middle.
You're fading a little bit, Joe.
What's that? Fading a bit. Oh, sorry.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Sorry, you kind of trailed off on the audio a little bit. I guess to play devil's advocate a little bit, currently, council has review and approval of all policies and procedures. And so, if it's not broken, do we really need to fix it? I don't, I think asking for an approval is important or at least a proactive affirmative need for the council to inform their department liaison. Otherwise, just saying, let's try to do this, I don't know if that serves the same purpose. I don't have the same concern about creating mini-mayors. I don't think that we currently have that happening with other processes that are the exact same process. I just think this should be a unanimous vote or very close. If it's something where there's a lot of, if you guys can live with just the bolded change and the preamble and I, I'm happy to go along with it, but if half of us are not on board, I don't think we should make a change to an issue that has repercussions for the checks and balances of the city. It's just kind of, so, I mean, I'm trying to be flexible, but, yeah, I, I guess I just don't have the same concern that the administrative branch says, but I have, I have the other concern, which is just, it's always been this way and council's always had the approval over both. Maybe we should just divide it up for organizational ease of reading, but council should maintain approval of policies and procedures and we could just see how many come in front of us.
If council wants no changes, we're fine. And, well, I say I'm fine. Sorry, three years of your work, you know, is, is what it is. Again, I don't want to beat this up from, from all these areas. I just want a, a decision to go forward one way or the other.
So, here's, here's the only thing I would think about before, if that's the direction you want to go. If you noticed when you got the, uh, procedure or policies, there are policies that have changed mostly because of the law. They're not changed yet. If we leave it the way it is, they're not changed. They're all going to have to come back. I have to send them back to the union again and there's another window of time before we come, before our policies comply with the law. Our practice complies with the law, but the policy doesn't. So, if we start over, we're not over. We're going to come back to you again and again to fix all the policies that this one fix would fix. So, I, again, I, it, not that, that you can't do that or that's what you want to do, that's fine, but be aware, that's, that's the impact. You won't not see this again. You're going to see it probably five or six more times.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogue.
I, I think Councilman Borden hit on a solution and that's, we would hope you would encourage your directors to discuss all important things with liaisons and keep them in the loop. And, and whether it's procedures or whether it's other things, I, I think that's the way to go. And, and depending on the liaison and department they're in, it might be that, hey, you know, just keep me in the loop and, and, uh, I, I think we'll be fine that way. Usually, directors are very good about making sure liaisons are, are well aware of things that are happening, whether they're procedures or not, which is very helpful. You know, having served at parks, as many of you have, you know, Steve keeps us up to date on all sorts of things of what's going on and whatnot, and, and those are helpful and, and being able to provide feedback. And, yeah, and if there was something that I would go, oh, you guys are doing that? Well, I'm, I want to talk to the mayor about that because that, that, that impacts a park I live by and I know my neighbors wouldn't like that type of thing, but that's just kind of a normal course of business, if you will.
The, the reality is the only person that's going to impact is you because the only policy changes are going to come from HR, legal, finance and IT. That's the only people that have policies, so all the other.
Right.
So, yeah. I, I will make a great conversation with Councilman Borden about anything in the fire department, because any change is going to be initiated by the fire department, so that's really what it does come down to.
Yeah. And I think that's fine. We can have those agreements and these directors know very well what, what's important and what isn't, and they've, they've got the experience to do that. So, I'm, I'm fine with moving forward as, as we've outlined, from a standpoint of do we need to change and separate out policies and procedures? We do. I mean, it's, it's time to do that, update them, make sure now it's, and, and I think we've settled on a good course with Councilman Borden laid out for how we do that with the intro and, and the marking. And then, I just get to chat with you guys from time to time and you go, do you want to know about this or not? So, we can do that.
It'll probably take us, 15 would be the next one we could put the final resolution on with the changes for final approval. So, that would be what I would propose to do is we get back on the.
On that, council, do you feel comfortable starting with on consent on the 15th? Or do you want another department report discussion on the 15th based on what you've, the direction you've seen and heard?
We need, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
I guess consent would be sufficient, not a report necessarily. And if someone wants to provide some context, you could pull it from consent, but.
Okay.
That would be it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we've reached the end of our agenda, at least the last one I saw.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogue.
A move that we adjourn the work session.
A motion to adjourn all in favor of seeing that by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Nay? You guys have it? We're adjourned. Nay. You guys have it. We are adjourned.
Hey, I'm just testing this out. Can you guys hear me? Sweet.
Fantastic.
Council will call the meeting to order for the record. It is February first, 2022 at six o'clock PM. We'll begin this evening's regular city council meeting with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman or Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Burnt.
Here.
Councilwoman Perrow. Councilman Cavanagh. Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here.
Next time, it's the Pledge of Allegiance. If it all please rise and join us in pledge. Mr. Clark, do we have anybody for the community invocation this evening?
Mr. Mayor, we did not have anyone sign up.
Okay, then with that, we will move on to adoption of the agenda. Mr. Mayor. Councilman Hoagland.
I move adoption of the agenda as published.
Have a motion of seconds to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. You guys have it and the agenda is adopted. Mr. Clark came on and signed up under public form.
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay, then with that, we will move right into our action items this evening. Our first item up is a public hearing continuing from December 21st, 2022 for Alpha Development. We will continue this public hearing with staff comments from Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Good evening. As noted, the project tonight was continued from December 21st, which we had some lengthy discussion about it then. I'm not going to go deep into detail about the original project. But in general, it is near the northwest corner of Ten Mill and Ustick or sorry, Ten Mill and McMillan. Ustick is the next one. Proposal is for DA modification. That is the application before us tonight. Because the site has a different, this is the original concept plan. They're proposing to change the concept plan consistent with multifamily. This was the original concept plan discussed at the previous hearing. At the hearing, there was discussions about trip generation overall. Circulation really was the biggest takeaway that I got out of that discussion about how people can get to the other commercial on the actual commercial or that's on Ten Mile and McMillan. So the applicant went back and revised their site plan and has now proposed this. They have included a new road here, which after discussion with the applicant, they are proposing to build a public local road here. And not just a drive aisle in order to help get people from Gondola to Vicenza Way as well as to the road that's here that is a, just a secondary. I do not believe it's public, but it's a, you know, commercial drive aisle road that's on the north side of the Walmart park property. They also moved a little bit of the open space around. It does appear if you flip back and forth, some of the central open space seems to have decreased, but they've also gained some open space along the perimeters. This is, you know, dimension wise, it's hard to tell right now, but this is a pretty significant area as well as this area here that was not previously here. Really, that's all I had for my presentation on this unless the council has questions.
Thank you, Joe. Council, any questions? Okay, would the applicant like to come forward? You say your name and address for the record, please.
Dustin Hole, Alpha Development Group, 801 Reserve Street, Boise. Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you very much. Happy New Year, Merry Christmas. I think we were here right before the holidays last time. Thank you for doing the pledge of allegiance. Surprised at some cities that I go to that don't do that. So thank you for that. Mr. Dodson, thank you. We want to appreciate and acknowledge Mr. Dodson as well as Mr. Parsons in all the conversations that we've had thus far. I think when we left the meeting last time, we really heard two points. I think one was Mr. Dodson's point, another that we heard certainly was density. And so I do want to address both of those items with you tonight. So first in regards to density is Mr. Dodson noted in his brief staff report or his updated staff report, he noted that no major changes have been made to that. And that is, that is correct. And there's three or four points as to why thus far no major changes have been made. So one, since inception in starting this process with staff as well as several neighborhood meetings, we're now on our fourth or fifth concept plan. In each of those concept plans, I think we've been able to show how we maintain two different product types. Maintain what we're looking at is as about 30% open space. I know that's there's conditioned open space and the alternative, but about 30% open space. All while still maintaining about that same, that same density. So knowing that we're going through a PD process as well. We want to make certain that we're allowed to go through that due process without what feels like might be shortcutting it or arbitrarily capping that as we go through that process. We think going through the ordinance. There are means and methods and mechanisms to, to provide everything that's required through the ordinance and we recognize that that, that density will be somewhere as permitted for the comprehensive plan and the underlying zone. Number, number two to that is we know we still have to provide all and adhere to all the other conditions that we've proposed. So that open space. This new road, the concept plan, the access points, all of those items are items that we know will have an impact to what that final density is going through the PD process. And then the fourth in part is with this extra land dedication and part of these improvements that we're now agreeing to resolve and work through on this north property line. That's kind of a fourth minor but fourth point as to why we have not directly and specifically addressed density. As to, as to traffic. We really had to think through this one to be honest with you. So we had conversations and meetings with the property owner to the north. His biggest concern owning 55 acres to the north of us is part of his master plan. He knows he's got to get roads all the way through the north through this property and that it has to be developed. He has very grave concerns that we, we or he puts a road in meandering all the way to the north. And the next day, a, a commercial user or some application comes by and says you've put the road in the absolute wrong spot. And so trying to think through that, trying to think through making certain that that stretch of McMillan in front of this property doesn't become something that our residents have to frequent to go to schools. That other residents of Bridge Tower don't have to frequent to get to shopping. We came up with this alternative of a road along the north property line. You should have received, I think Joe and, and council members and mayor, you should have received acknowledgement from the property owner that he's in agreement to work with us. That he's in support of what we're doing. We're willing to make that as we were before an item of the DA modification. And so we are proposing that road and proposing that it's a piece of the, the DA modification. I think that all the other conditions that were previously proposed by staff, we're still in agreement with. We're in agreement with the alterations that were made to point number four regarding the landscaping in this roadway in Mr. Dodson's letter on, on January 25th. So we're in agreement with those alterations. We would propose one new ninth item. And what that item would be is it would relate to this road and it would be that we will work through getting this road built, dedicated, inspected, dedicated and everything prior to the first issuance of a, of a certificate of occupancy. So prior to any resident of ours moving in, this road would be open and operable. That's a, that's a ninth condition that we would propose and self impose to make certain that you know that this roadway connecting San Vito and Vicenza makes sense. The, the other point that I failed to mention, we actually think this helps with traffic on Gondola. So some of the comments that we heard are people coming north on San Vito. There is not a stop sign right now at the north end of San Vito turning left onto Gondola. And so individuals motorists are able to carry a rather high speed of traffic pace, turning left and flowing onto Gondola. By the creation of this new extension of Gondola, if you will, it'll force a three, a three-way stop. So there'll be a stop sign there. Individuals will not be able to just free flow left. They'll have to stop. They'll have to acknowledge and think through. Is someone coming from the right? Is someone coming from the left going straight? So we actually think it has other mitigating, traffic mitigating factors as well. Those are all the reasons that we ended up with this road alignment along the, the north property line. So as, as stated, we're in agreement with the other conditions, the alterations to number four. We would self impose this point number nine if the city council wanted to add it to that list. Otherwise, we appreciate your time and respectfully request your approval of this matter tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Does council any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
Thank you. I was not present at the original meeting, but I did review the meeting in preparation for this one and all the materials. I'm sorry, I just wanted to state that. I saw in Compass's analysis that they were suggesting a specifically a crosswalk. And I was wondering if you're going to be addressing that.
A specific crosswalk at?
If you could pull up the, it's not San Vito, it's I think Vicenza. In Compass's letter, they specifically said that there should be a crosswalk to get to the shopping.
Yeah, yes, I think, I think staff actually had made that recommendation in one of our, our first meetings as well, whether it was down at our ingress egress point, a little bit further south, certainly at this new road at the north end. That's something that we would look to, to implement.
Okay, so you'll be completing that as part of your, like you're amenable to that condition?
Yes.
Okay. And then I guess maybe just one more, Mr. Mayor, if I can.
Councilman Strater.
So I, I appreciate that you were very proactive on providing a road solution. That, that's definitely seems like a step in the right direction. I guess what was your thought process in terms of not addressing the density head on and either a reduction in units or some other type of an approach at this point?
Only that we haven't gone through the full process. So knowing that we haven't gone through the full PD process to assess exactly exteriors of the buildings. Exact conditioned open space. Going through that in whole, whole process, we have not gone through it. So to do, to do something short of that feels like we've shorted the due process and feels arbitrary. Mr. Mayor.
Just one second, Joe. Councilman Strater, did you get enough from that answer?
Yeah, I, I have got the answer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, Joe.
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify, Mr. Holt's saying PD because a lot of other places do planned developments as a CUP. I just want to clarify that that's the process is the conditional use permit, not a planned unit development.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Joe.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Couple of questions, Mr. Holt.
Yeah.
One, this is, this is kind of interesting. I recalled when you, when you introduced yourself the last time you were here, you said you were from Salt Lake. And then you said you're from Boise. So are, are you a resident now at the Treasure Valley or was there just a change in address?
Change in address.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, follow up.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I, I guess my, my question falls somewhat in line with Councilmember Strater and, and I guess maybe helping me understand. You were pretty clear from council, some concern about density and you had a, a great opportunity to lead and say, this is what we're proposing. I mean, I guess any advice for me as a council member who won't know how many units this unit will have at the conclusion of this meeting, except for it can't be more than 249. How I explain that to our community who's voiced some real strong concern about density?
That's, that's a fair question. So I think, I think what, what we looked at as we tried to assess this is, is two factors. The underlying comp plan with a density range up to that, that would never exceed that number. And, and we're not asking to exceed that number. As well as an underlying zoning ordinance that has other restrictions as it relates to open space circulation. As well as a now third step, the, the CUP process that will get even further into that. So this is, this is a, a concept plan that has not been fully vetted. So to not go through that process and, and be allowed to go all the way through that process feels like it's being cut short. Right on the heels of that is that three or four or five concept plans have now been shown or presented that I think address issues are still providing in, in our math, that 30 plus percent open space. I think that will exceed the, the requirement in the ordinance itself. And so, but if we don't, I think Joe was pretty clear. Joe was pretty clear last time. He doesn't believe we will. He thinks that in order for us to achieve that open space requirement, it will require a reduction in density. So I'm not here tonight saying lock me hard and fast at 249 units. What I'm saying is let us go through that process. Let us understand it. I think we heard multiple times from council members that the planning commission going through that will have issues, will want us to address things, may or may not get 249 units. And I think that's what you're hearing from us is instead of arbitrarily and capriciously setting a number. Let's go through the process. We, we think the process was designed to work. We think there's an underlying comp plan and zone in place with some forethought. So let us go through that process.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I appreciate the, the feedback on that. And I, I think it's, you know, I'm just, I'm just. just one vote and obviously this isn't, this isn't an annexation, but as one who is in favor of the existing development agreement, it's hard for me to waver from saying this is worthy of a change or a modification without having all the details for me to feel satisfied that a change is warranted. I'm, I'm just sure to be direct with you.
Yeah, and, and, and I can appreciate that. The other thing that we didn't hear is if there was a number, that, that's the other thing, right? So we went away and, and we've now come back with a new road and a new public road and, and I didn't hear if it was 100 units, 107, 207, 220. So to, 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 to just state a number doesn't feel like we've gone through that process.
And Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I appreciate that and I think that we as a body try not to prescribe this is the number, but that said, you, you did hear the concern from council and you chose not to respond, which again, totally your, your choice and, and you've got your own reasons for doing so, but I, I guess I'm going to push back a little bit to say with you didn't do something because you didn't get a number from council. Council was pretty clear that they had some reservations. Some council members were, were pretty clear they had some reservations about the density.
No, and I, again, I, I didn't try, I didn't try to, we're not trying to shirk away from that. I, I'm not, which is why I brought it up as a point that we clearly heard walking away. It wasn't just traffic that we heard, it was density. But for those three or four reasons, that's why you have not seen massive or significant changes to the concept plan.
Council, any additional questions for the applicant? Okay.
Thank you.
Very much. Mr. Clerk, did we have one to sign up to provide testimony on the side in this evening?
Mr. Mayor, we had two advanced signups. First is trying to hit the right button, Dan Buffam. And Dan, you're able to unmute yourself.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name's Dan Buffam. I live at 3554 West Balducci Street. I'm on the south side of this development. I just wanted to bring up a couple of things, you know, that, you know, thank you for the council member recognizing that the developer didn't address, in my case, I think everybody, at least that lives here in this area is the density problem. I think the road is, you know, a, a good start, but I also see that it is actually going to cause more problems because that gives a new throughput from people avoiding McMillan and/or Ten Mile to go through that neighborhood on the north side. So I think, you know, my neighbors over there are going to have a bigger problem with that as well. And, and the road does nothing to mitigate the traffic on McMillan. And in fact, you know, I think it's, it's going to cause more because it's a shortcut essentially down the center from people coming out of the Walmart Center and whatever else they develop in those other areas there. We already have a problem and I wanted to, you know, bring this up the last time we stuck with, with cars and, and coming and commercial vehicles coming down Vicenza because they're cutting the corner of Ten Mile and McMillan. If this is the loud, I'd like the, the city council to, to, to recognize that that's already a safety hazard and the more traffic we have coming down that and with all of, I mean, they are right now currently building on the, on the south side, the, the north side, the west, a lot on the west side, Black Cat, tons of things going in there and multifamily, single family, hundreds of homes. There's no way to expand McMillan. So the, all of those people as a main artery are coming down there. And I just don't, you know, I'd like the city council to understand that, you know, and I think you guys do, you're hearing us, that you can only make this place so dense. And, and if the more stuff you put in there, the more dangerous that it's going to get. You have to have schools. Personally, my kids are all grown, but you know, my neighbor's kids have schools and, and you know, I could just see it getting overpacked. I'd ask that, you know, if, if they, to consider to at least, you know, Vicenza to, to, you know, put speed bumps in there. I don't care if you put three or four speed bumps in there and I have to do 10 miles an hour. That means everybody else who uses that to cut corners would do 10 miles an hour. But I really think the density problem is really key here, not, not just a road. And whenever they address it, whether it's today or it's next month or three months from now, it needs to be addressed. We have way too much going on in here. And as the big picture goes, you know, the developers, you know, even though they're trying to be, you know, accommodating in some ways, they don't live here. I live here. There's, I believe a city council member lives in this area. They don't have to do this and they're not taking into account everything else that's being already built and they broken ground, trucks trash, everything flying all over the place and hundreds of homes. And that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Buffam. Council, any questions? Thank you very much. Next up, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, next is Jennifer Fedawa. Jennifer, if you're online, if you can raise your hand, I don't see your name.
We do have someone with their hand raised, so why don't we go to Chris Williams online?
Mr. Williams, you can unmute yourself.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Chris Williams, live at 4476 North Gerasolo Avenue. I am on the south side of the development as well. Again, just as the council member said, density, I mean, that's huge and I know they don't want to put a number on there, but to have so much density there in this area, given all the other developments that we know and the other intersections very close by, it's too much density. The roads, the one, the new road that they added, that's, that's only going to solve so much, not to mention the stop sign. I mean, we're going to have to have a stop sign there anyways, once the rest of the property north gets developed, but it's just with even, I'll even say 225 units, even if they lowered it. On average, every person has two vehicles. I mean, we, we can all do the simple math. It just doesn't make sense and it's a huge safety concern for me with my kids who I have going to that elementary school right there. I mean, just going down, you know, that street, you know, right off McMillan, it's dangerous enough, it's a pain in the butt to get in and out of that as it is with all the traffic. And I think until we solve this density, you know, it's just not a smart move to approve this kind of blindly and hoping that maybe down the road, they'll lower the density in the best case scenario. The other piece outside the density is I'm all for trying to keep, you know, wealth and money in the community. All these are going to be rental units. That's not keeping any of the money within the community or help, you know, individuals building wealth, building equity or, you know, a better life in my opinion. You know, with that, it's just a massive rental complex, you know, to, to, and I'm sorry to say it, but to make another buck, that, that's what it is. But, so I would please ask that council recommend to either deny this or have it redesigned where we can truly get a number in mind for density. I think a neighborhood would be better suited. I think, you know, commercial, smaller retail would be better suited, given the issues. We know that McMillan in that area can't be expanded. We, I believe, addressed that at the last hearing. So I just kindly ask you guys to keep that in mind in making your decision.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Council, any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to come forward and provide testimony on this item or anybody online that would like to provide testimony? Please use the raise your hand feature so we can include you into this public comment period. Go ahead and come on forward, ma'am. Let me set your name and address for the record.
Michelle Freeman, M.I.C.H.E.L.L. I live at 3931 Reba Capri. My concern was on San Vito and Vicenza, right now we have no parking signs on both sides of those roads. I'm concerned with when this development is built, that there'll be overflow out onto those roads with cars parked on both sides of the street. And you see that a lot in areas around, and I don't think that's safe for the amount of people, especially in the spring and summer, riding their bicycles and that type of thing. And it just adds activity out there. So that's my concern and I don't personally want to drive into my neighborhood with cars parked on the side of the street. So that's, I'm wondering if those parking signs will stay there so that there's no overflow because I know he's mentioned that there's two car garages under the townhouse as well. More than likely, a good percentage of those people are not going to be parking in their garage. Apartments are short-lived, he even had mentioned that, that people won't be here for maybe year to year and a half, which means at least half that garage is full of their things. And I don't feel like that should be considered 100% of parking for what's available there because they won't park there. So that's my concern is parking on the streets.
Okay. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember.
Ma'am, I got a question for Ms. Freeman. Yes, ma'am. I, I certainly would appreciate it if you did. And so would Dean, he, he won't like you screaming from the back, so. So I, so are you saying that currently there are no parking signs on those two streets that you reference?
Correct, on both sides of the street.
Okay, perfect, thank you. That was easy.
All right, we'll see if someone online.
So Michelle Banda, Michelle, you can unmute yourself.
Am I good?
Yes, you are.
Okay. My name is Michelle Banda. I live at 3801 West Milano Street. I back straight up to this property, I back straight up to San Vito. I've been at all of the neighborhood meetings. I did miss the first city council meeting, but I've been at both neighborhood meetings. I will acknowledge that at first the developer seemed very willing to listen to our requests. Originally, they had no fence along San Vito and we unequivocally stated that that was not acceptable. They've since put a fence up. But now tonight, it seems like they're kind of backtracking and even though the city told them to make this development less dense, they didn't listen to that. And in my opinion, they've made it actually more dense because it seems like they took their original plan and squished it all to put this road in. And I'll, you know, say like others have said, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense for that road to make a whole lot of difference to this development, except like others have said, to create a shortcut through the neighborhood. So I just wanted to add my voice to the fact that I don't think that they're continuing to try and work with us on this. I don't think they're trying to continue to work with the city with their requests to make this a less dense project. I don't think this area can handle this high density. We've got another development going up on the north side of Walmart. There's more going in off of Black Cat. It's just, it's going to make this area just a nightmare in terms of, of traffic and density. And we specifically came to this side of Bridge Tower West because it was less dense. So I just wanted to add that. No real questions, but just wanted to add those few comments.
Thank you very much. Council, any questions? Okay. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to come forward on this item or anybody online?
Ms. Freeman, want to say anything again?
With that, would the applicant like to make final comments? Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
Did the app, did you say you don't want to say anything? Okay.
He waved.
Okay. I, I'll start off the conversation with my thoughts. My thoughts are in line with what was said before from other council members and also some of the folks who testified publicly. One thing that I will give kudos to the developer for is the connectivity, you know, between the two areas that, that road makes a big difference in my opinion. So thank you for listening to us and making that improvement. On the other hand, I'm, you know, and, and it's really interesting for those who, just to be clear in what we're, what's before us this evening is this, this property is already zoned R15, the zoning's not going to change as far as density is concerned. What, what the developer's wanting to do is remove, you know, the, the development agreements that says there's going to be an assistive living on the properties. That, that's what they're asking for right now. And so whether, whether or not, well, I, I guess what I'm trying to say is that the density is, is not a question. The project has already been, you know, it's, he can build whatever, you know, he can build R15 on it currently. And so, but with that said, you know, Councilman Cavanagh mentioned something earlier that I, that I completely agree with, and that is I'd like to have something. You know, I'd like, I'd like to know something. And the reason I say that is because we just came off an election year and I've knocked on thousands of doors, as did, you know, council member Borton and Luke, and that's probably the reason why we're probably hair more passionate about this than others because we talked to the folks in their front doorways and they all said basically the same thing, you know? You know, growth is an issue. And so I, I'd like to, I'd like to know what that looks like. And we spoke about it, you know, last time you were here. I, I know that you're not, it would be very difficult for you to give an exact number based upon the CUP process and that, what that looks like. And for those who are, don't know what that is, so basically to approve the project, you know, which would include the exteriors and the, and what the project looks like, what the buildings look like, the amount of units, so on and so forth, that would, that would be at another public hearing at the planning and zoning level. It would never come to us. So this potentially could be the last time we hear this, this, this. And I, I would really like to know what that number is ballpark. And so before, before I would vote to approve this, I would need to know that number, you know, at least fairly close. And I think that you've been doing this long enough, sounds like you've been in other cities doing other projects. And so I don't think it'd be too difficult for you to come up with that number, in my opinion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
I agree with Councilwoman Burt about, burnt about the connectivity. I think that's a critical element of this, considering that it's, you know, it's been a priority of the city of Meridian to have these, have other connections from one arterial road to another, and this will accomplish that. I do have a couple of questions for the applicant, if you wouldn't mind coming up. So the memo.
For me, so I'm trying to make certain I don't do that again. Yes, Councilwoman Pro.
Thank you. The memo, the, the memo with the new concept plan stated that this would be a public road. The concept drawing appears that these would function more like private roads? I just, I'm having a hard time seeing this as a public road as you've presented it different from the roads that run internally and how that will flow and work for safety. And I mean, obviously there aren't a lot of buildings that are facing this, so you're, you're trying to keep the residential piece isolated from it. But I just, help me understand more about how this is going to appropriately function as a public road in relationship to how traffic will flow through the interior. And then the second question I have for you is, who will want to sit in their bathing suit right next to McMillan Road?
I would, no. I'm actually going to have to rely a little on, on Joe for some help on the road. So what I understand is the, the local public ride of way is 47, 48 feet? Is that right? Versus our internal, so, so the road along the north end, and I don't know if, if Joe can pull it up on the screen, but the, the proposed road along the north end, the local road is a 47-foot ride of way. So it allows for a couple of lanes of traffic, the, the necessary curb gutter on both sides, land strip or, or park strip and then sidewalk. Contrary to most of the ones inside the project, those are closer to 30-foot to make certain that we accommodate the fire truck, fire truck aerial or aerial apparatus, the long truck, the circulation, the radii for those roads. So it's hard to tell on a 16-acre site plan, but just off the cuff, I think there's a 17, 18-foot plus or minus discrepancy in those road sizes to, to be a local road, which is what's proposed on the north end compared to anything else. Is that fairly said, Joe?
Mr. Mayor, I'd prefer you answer the second question and I'll come back.
Oh, the bikinis out on the street. I, I'm a little disappointed actually to hear Mr. Buffam's comment that, that we haven't done anything because I can tell you the entire reason that that clubhouse at a single story is on that corner is from our first neighborhood meeting. Our first concept plan, that was one of our three-story buildings out on the street for the reasons of visibility, a leasing office, banners, accessibility, flow. And his concern was that our residents on the third floor would look at his And his concern was that our residents on the third floor would look at his wife in her bikini in their backyard in their pool. So there is a direct and specific reason why we moved a single-story, 15-ish foot, so not just a 10-foot simple structure, but a single-story clubhouse and common area facility on that corner to move the building to the north of the pool, to the north side of that, to create an even bigger buffer from some of those residents on the south side of McMillan. So I was a little disheartened to hear that. As far as who's going to want to be out there, you'd be surprised. And going, again, part of, part of this is we know there's more steps. And that's the frustrating part to me. I can appreciate Councilmember Burnt that you've went out, knocked doors, heard, heard concerns. Part of it to me is we haven't even gotten to the, all the fun part. Landscaping, orientation, some of those designs, we haven't even really gotten into it, which is what we do in the CP process, which is where you're hearing that, that hesitancy come from the density side of things. He's absolutely correct. I could tell you right now, to lose 10%, 25 units is not going to impact things. I don't know if that's the number. To go to 200, yes, that impacts things. I can't do the road. I can't do the common areas. Again, part of the reason this whole thing came about that we seem to have forgotten about in our first neighborhood meeting, the residents did not want me to be a part of the Bridge Tower master plan community. They want us to do our own amenities. They don't want our residents in their facilities. So part of it is spending several million dollars building a road, several million dollars building amenity spaces for our residents to keep them out of that. That's a big piece of this. And so, yes, I've been doing this long enough to know that roughly an eight, nine, 10% haircut, 25 units, I can live with. If the number's 200, I can't. And at that point, I'd have to go back and readdress the road. I'd have to go back and readdress, hey, you know what? Maybe I need to be able to use your facilities. Even though I told you in my first neighborhood meeting, if that's cut and dry, what you don't want, what I heard is hell no, we don't want to be, you to be a part of our master plan. We don't want you to get rid of the fence. We tried to honor those two, those two points. So that, that's the hesitancy, that's the reluctance in, in saying, is it, is it 222? Is it 227? Right in that range, I know works. Less than that, I, I've got to go back and address bigger things that have me going back on other items that I tried to address or, or comply with. To answer your question very specifically, landscaping. Landscaping can do a lot. So part of the reason we want a pool close to the open space, landscaping and screening, fencing, other things can do. We want that view right next to our common area, right next to our clubhouse. Our clubhouses end up with barbecues. They end up with full indoor outdoor kitchens so that someone can gather, watch a Super, watch a Super Bowl, and not that they'd be in bikinis at the Super Bowl, but have a Fourth of July party, interior, exterior flow in and out, and that space needs to be, be connected. Can we figure out ways to address it? If that's a concern you have viewing the pool from that street, I'm more than happy to address that as part of the CUP process. What kind of screening, landscaping, fencing, where does the pool equipment go? We've used all of those things, pergolas, canopies. We've used all of those things to screen the pool when we've had city, cities or residents that are concerned about a view shed directly onto a pool on a public right of way. I think Joe was going to address the road. Sorry.
Counselwoman Pro, if you have a follow-up to his, then I'll go after you, however you want to do it.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselwoman Pro.
Let me ask one more question, please. So the pool was just a curiosity question. It's very unusual for us to see it on a main corridor up close like that. So it really has nothing to do with our decision here this evening, but I just, I'm glad to hear that you will put in some, some privacy measures in that regard.
It was interior. If Joe has our first concept plan, it was interior to the site.
We just heard an application off Eagle Road that was denied due to flow of traffic through with internally and then surrounding the, the property. Little bit different layout, but they also had to access part of their property through another property, which is, and, and thank you for getting the letter from the neighbor because that was a critical element of this for me. In that development, there, similar to this, there were 30-foot wide roads. And one of the conversations we had was safety of cars moving through, backing out of carports. You know, in this case, they probably would circle around to that east side and stop and unload their groceries and try to come back, you know, park, park in their parking spot. And there's going to probably be a lot of people driving in, stopping and getting out and hauling things and whatnot of the way this is laid out. The 30-foot, the 30-foot private roads and the flow of traffic with this level of density concerns me for safety issues within the development internally. We've had some other recent applications where I've voiced this, where I've driven through them and seen where there's significant opportunity for fender benders, somebody backing out and not seeing a pedestrian and those kinds of things. So if you have developed this similar type of project with this similar density and had success and not seeing issues with pedestrians, you know, safety, children at play, you know, fender benders, please share that with me. Because there are some projects here that have significant issues with, with similar designs.
I would tell you we have. I would also tell you, we've also had issues, right? I've had a U-Haul hit a, hit a carport. So it, it happens. The things that we try to do to mitigate it, signage, lighting and delineation. So, for example, between some of the, the open space areas going to, the middle open space area, basketball court, I don't know if this mouse works. Oh, yeah. Some of these areas, nope, north of that, I think it's Joe that's controlling those areas, right? So making certain that some of those areas get connected with well-lit, well-delineated pedestrian access points through, through the block is something that's critical. Lighting on the underside of carports or on the exterior of the buildings in, in the garage areas. The other thing that is worth noting is because these are fire sprinkled buildings, we've got that, that road width, and then on, on the townhome side of things, because we are going to build under the IBC, so not the IRC, but the IBC will be over 35 feet, we have to provide an aerial apparatus access. So that's the big ladder truck. So I, the, the truck cannot be, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chief, Fire Chief, we cannot be closer than 15 feet and further than 30 feet. So in addition to the, those 26 to 30-foot drive aisles, there has to be another spot where we have at least 15 feet. We can't be closer than 15 feet and further than 30 feet. Is that correct? So that is an additional buffer in addition to the actual driving corridor space. You're, you're looking at a very 10,000-foot level. And so back down, zooming back down closer, inside of those 15 feet to 30 feet, again, planting the correct materials in the right spots so that you don't impact visibility, getting lighting right, getting signage right, getting other delineation to try and keep the residents and people where we want them to be, which is through the Paseos, through the well-intended, well-lit common areas and those connection points. Is it, is it a 100% fail-safe? No, it's not. It's drastically better than turning your back on it or not, not addressing it, if that makes sense. More specifics than that, I don't know that I can give you, but, but certainly landscaping, signage. And then because we're building under the IBC, it requires us to have a greater, some greater areas of separation than if we were building under IRC. We, we don't have to have that extra aerial apparatus access buffer. So some of those areas where we have that extra 15 feet, we would not have to have under IRC.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
I'll go ahead and answer the local road portion. First of all, the, I didn't, this concept plan that I received and I put in my presentation actually wasn't the correct one because I had three access points right here, which Dustin and I had had a conversation and I told him that's not going to meet offset requirements for ACHD. So you got to remove it. So they've moved it to the interior, which I think makes it a lot better to just have this access point and this access point. We see this a lot with a lot of different projects with, you know, a private multifamily drive aisle connection to a local street, which is why initially I was concerned that they were going to propose this as a gondola extension and have a, have the collector road, which I think would be a bad idea because really that collector street needs to connect for the north in the future. So the fact that this is a local street, I think, is a benefit compared to a collector. Secondly, local versus private functionality probably won't change much, to be honest. Whether it's local or private, the benefit of it being local is you will be allowed to have on-street parking on the local street that crosses through versus if it was a private drive aisle, we more than likely would not. Now, when I say private, I do not mean private roads. There, I anticipate they will not have a private street application, which is separate to put these roads within an easement and/or a common lot. But they will be multifamily, private drive aisles, private in the sense of ownership, you know, multifamily development will own it. They will be at least 26 feet wide pavement minimum because of the fire. I will say, looking at the concept plan, I see quite a bit of, I guess you could say driveways of some sorts in front of these garage areas, which I've actually not seen in any of the multifamily developments that I've seen. It's always been right up to that property line and you have no room between, which I've lived in places like that and it hasn't been that bad, frankly. But, you know, I've also lived in places a lot more dense than this. So just a different dynamic. It is livable. It, I, I haven't seen, to your point, Counselwoman Pro, the, some of those issues. But I haven't, I'll admit, I haven't spent a lot of time within a lot of multifamily developments. The one that I did live in here before we were a miracle able to afford a home, it, I didn't see that happen. I actually didn't see, there was a lot of issues. And they did not have drive aisles in front of the garages. It was a pain to get a U-Haul near the garage to put some stuff in it. But I, I see your points. I, to Mr. Holt's point regarding the density, I and the council's points, I see both sides very clearly from a staff perspective. I do anticipate that commission will deal with density in some regard if the DA mod is approved. Regardless, if, if the DA mod is denied, this will sit and we'll have to do this all over again with something else, whether that, whatever that development might be. I would just recommend that if we go that route, that there are specifics so that if Mr. Holt wants to come back around or somebody else, that if it's going to require commercial or if it's going to require other things in order to get an approval from this council, that, that we delineate those very clearly, whether, you know, because we can't necessarily require a rezone. But we can discuss, hey, you, we want commercial here, we want things like that, which then in turn would and instigate a future rezone. So I just want to be very clear on that as we move forward through the deliberation.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
Since I came up, Ms. Friedman's comment on the no parking, it's, it, I don't, I think there, that's actually tied to the Bridge Tower master plan. So I have no ability to remove those signs or to permit on-street parking. So I think just on the record, that should be noted. To Mr. Dodson's comment, as we look to accommodate the aerial apparatus access, yes, there are certain townhomes where all of a sudden we found an ability to do an 18 or 20-foot driveway behind the unit that otherwise we wouldn't have had. Part of that is trying to be responsive to if individuals, you, we, we provide a lot of storage opportunities in areas inside of our buildings. But if, if a resident were to choose to utilize that, their garage for storage, it's an extra attempt of additional parking stalls for visitors, for individuals with more than one vehicle without actually being a parking stall that's counted. So we really truly did try to take those things into consideration. And I think that's the hard part for me. Do I want this application denied? Absolutely not. We've, we've bought the ground. We bought the ground back in the summer. Knowing or hearing some of the comments from staff, it was, you're, you're going to address a bunch of this stuff with the planning commission anyway. So I, I felt stuck. We're trying to show a plan. I, I think to my point before, an eight to 10% drop right now, I know I can withstand. Something greater than that, I'd have to go back and revisit probably the entirety of it. So if that answers your question more specifically, thank you. Any other questions for me or?
Counsel, any questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Joe.
One last comment regarding the road. I, in addition to the letter from the previous landowner and the owner to the north, I had a lengthy discussion with that owner as well regarding the road. And he anticipates fully cooperating should this get approved. I just wanted to be super clear on that, that those conversations happened. It wasn't just a, an email.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselwoman Borden.
If we've received information necessary to at least get our discussion going, I'll provide some, some comments and thoughts. You know, the context and Councilmember Burnt hit on it is some helpful framework to know what is before us and what isn't. You know, the, the property is already annexed and encumbered with the development agreement that has this concept plan to it. So yes, it's zoned R15. But that concept plan back in 08 was tied to this in its development agreement for a particular purpose. And it's mixed-use community, but still tied to what that intended. And which is frankly, it's much different than what's before us now. It's the reason that this DA modification is necessary. So while it's not an annexation, I look at it similar to that, as if this was a request and XR15 with this, if this was the plat, for example, the intended use and, and would it be in the best interest of the city to have this be included? So with that mindset, in light of all of the information that we heard from the applicant and heard from the public, concerns about density among other things that I'm not convinced that the concept plan from 08 is improved with this application. I believe the property, encumbered as it is, while it hasn't yet developed, we try to think of these decisions in long-term generational type decisions. I still can feel convinced that the concept plan that was tied to the R15 annexation in 08 is most appropriate. Some of the elements that have been addressed in this application, the road, we've been one of them, that principle, my sense would be incorporated into that future development. Some of these really clever solutions, frankly, would probably go into that future plat that's developed consistent with the existing concept plan. So for those reasons, I think I'm not supportive of this application as presented. And I think the existing concept plan should be given more time to see its day.
Mr. Mayor? Counselwoman Hovind.
I have a question for Joe and maybe it involves Bill. To, to that point, if, if counsel were to turn this request down and say, no, you have to stick with the existing DA, it's still R15, we know that. And according to, to the report, the one, the concept plan for that specific to this property is an area of assisted living facilities or facility with supportive medical offices. Could a developer carve out a land section for that and may sit vacant for a number of years as it has already and still put in housing units that meet the R15 designation?
Counselwoman Hovind, good question. I would say there's multiple, there's multiple ways to answer that. Would it be, would it meet R15? Yes, I think it would. Would it not require a DA mod? I don't think so. I think it would still require a DA modification because the concept plan itself will not match or the plan would not match to this concept plan. Again, we, we staff, we have discretion in that. We have some leeway in that. But I would have to say the only way Bill, my supervisor, and Caleb, planning and myself would not require a DA mod on this site would be if something came in with. Bill, my supervisor and Caleb, planning and myself would not require DA mod on this site would be if something came in with a similar enough site plan where you have these like four-pack kind of units. If they did that, single-family, multifamily, I don't care. I, I think that that would be close enough to the concept plan to then just go straightforward to a CEP if it was multifamily and a plat if it was single. But either of those options would comply with R15. Yes. Hope that answered your question.
It helps. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
Just the, the brief historical context is, you know, in almost all cases, especially back then, we wouldn't approve an annexation without a plat. And the rare exception is the concept plan was kind of the plat light, sort of not set in stone, but intentionally a concept, I guess, because we didn't know exactly how the remainder of the properties would exactly develop. So there's purposeful teeth, I guess, into some of the structure of the concept plan, which I appreciate your, your hesitancy. It is a difficult question until you see it. You kind of don't know.
Right. Exactly. It, it. Any of these that require DA modification with concept plans, it gets murky pretty fast just because of you know, without being a lawyer, because I'm, yeah, didn't, I did not choose that route. I, it, it is, is, yeah. It's just hard to say. I don't know how far I want to go down that rabbit hole there, but it can be difficult to do that. Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Yeah, I've been, you know, I following up and reviewing the information from the last meeting and was really hoping to see a, a different concept plan that had less density. And that's really hard because, you know, on the one hand, you sort of, the applicant is saying, hey, let's follow a different process, but that process doesn't come before city council, right? And I, you know, so I struggle with that. I think if for me, the density is a huge concern in this, in this area with the traffic concerns in McMillan. I do think the roadway is an improvement. You know, I, I could probably wrap my head around something between 200 to 225 units would be a pretty significant reduction. But I don't think the applicant has, you know, necessarily stated they're firmly in support of that. Yeah, I, I, so I'm trying to weigh the fact that it, you know, it is zoned this way. I'm not sure if someone came forward with the exact concept plan from the previous DA, if that is actually a huge improvement or not, if I'm just being really honest. So I'd be in favor of possibly approving it if there was a reduction in density that we could agree on. But if we couldn't, then I, I'd probably be in the camp of denial today, hoping that it could come back if they had some more time, you know, in the future with a different concept plan that maybe addresses the density concern. I, I just feel that that concern needs to be addressed, that it's a high enough. It's a big enough issue in this location that to not address it is a mistake. I don't think it's in the interest of Meridian in the future to move forward with up to 250 here.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
A quick question for Joe about a comment in the staff report. On page four, it says the following mixed-use policies should be met with a proposed plan. And the, the second bullet point says supportive and proportional public and, and/or quasi-public spaces and places not included, limited to parks, plazas, outdoor gathering spaces. Do you feel like this concept plan meets that? I, I, I'm, I'm struggling with this being truly mixed use and not just a residential development.
Councilman Pro, I, I do not anticipate that this site itself is mixed use and meets all those policies. Absolutely not. Just like the last one that came through that was recommended for denial by commission, didn't meet all of them, and that was for this 60 acres to the north. When you have smaller sites and quote unquote smaller, you know, 16 acres isn't that big when you try to fit in multiple land uses. Public quasi-public spaces. I, in the revised concept plan, honestly, with that open space on the north end of the, the north side of the local road, I do think that would be a little bit more of that. I don't know if they would hit 5%. It's a pretty big area, but I say that because other discussions with the other property owner to the north, that they're, that buffer between this potential site and then future residential or commercial on the north side of the extension of the collector roads would be additional park space because they were, they had discussed at the commission hearing on that previous application about where the existing line or the fence line is for the park and how much should actually be there is not the same per the approvals. And so instead of taking that park or, or if they did take some of that area of the park to add it some, some back here. And then, then you get some shared common area, even if there's some commercial there, which was previously proposed. There's some shared quasi-public space between commercial plazas and some open space. Really, when I look at these, I'm not anticipating that this project does, but this project in conjunction with the existing commercial and conjunction with what the commercial that's zoned but not constructed on the south side and then everything in this little bubble will meet those. Yes. This project itself, no. And I, I, I wouldn't in good faith, you know, re- require that normally to say, hey, on the 16-acre parcel, you're going to have commercial in office, you're going to have multifamily, and you're going to have single family. Really, the mixed-use community in this area actually doesn't have any residential in it. Technically, right now, it's all commercial right now, but a lot of it's undeveloped as well. So there, we don't have a minimum commercial, which I would think is a bad thing in our mixed-use standards. But we do have a minimum residential. And that is not met technically right now. So this would be working towards that goal, correct? To have a mix of uses within that. Like I said, lots of facets to all of this.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoben. Joe, again, to follow up then to, to meet miss mixed use in the R15, that they, someone could propose a commercial building along McMillan and have that buffer McMillan, and then inside of that go with residential units, townhouses, apartment complexes and do a layout however, you know, and some of the testimony we hear is the fact that, well, we don't want anything over two stories and that sort of thing. And someone could propose four-story commercial and it makes, meets miss mixed use. So is, is that a correct view of that?
Councilman Hoagland, you, yes, that, that is one outcome that could occur if a rezon accompanied the DA mod with the intention of doing, you know, bigger office buildings along McMillan. That is something that planning staff in a bubble would love. I would much prefer that personally. But that's, you know, I don't get to design these, so it, it doesn't come out that way. But that was something that we had discussed with the applicant from the beginning, previous. I can't tell you how many people I've met with on this site before it was sold. So it, those are things that have come up. Yes. If a rezon occurred and there was some commercial along McMillan, absolutely. If, depending on the zoning, it would probably be at least 40 feet as a maximum.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoben.
I guess what, what makes this so difficult and to address the residents and people who testified whatnot is we could turn this down tonight, but what you get coming later, maybe something even less desirable. That's, that's the rub here. Yeah, I mean, if you, you could have someone decides with that Walmart and we know how that 10-mile and McMillan intersection is building up. My folks live kitty corner from Walmart back there. They're backed up against a couple of restaurants. It is not a good thing to have behind your house is a restaurant, delivery trucks and noise and whatnot. So I, that, that's, that's kind of the tough part. We don't, we don't know. We, we, if this gets turned down, what may come later, they may not be so amenable to suggestions and concept plans and different things like that. So that, that's what makes it difficult. Where we dealt with one on Chindon Road where there is a hospital going in. And there is homes in the area and the amount of time we spent on that from their ruining our sightlines, the distances, the height of the building, the lighting, all that good stuff. Needless to say, you know, it, it, it changes things. That property will change someday. And it's just what we're dealing with. It is zoned. It's, it's got plans for it right now. This developer wants to do something different. Okay. It's, it's before us tonight, but what those future plans are, if this doesn't go as they want, I don't know what's going to happen. So just, just fair warning, I guess, just one of those things. And then we'll have to deal with it at another time. So anyway.
Counsel, are we at a place where we're thinking to close the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
Get the discussion going. There's more to have to add, but for now, I'll move to close the public hearing on H2021-0094.
I have a motion a second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ice has happened. The public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
It's been good discussion. I think it provides historical context of how we got here and what might come in the future. Councilman Hoagland's comments are spot on in that regard. You know, this is the one that you know, we don't know if it, if this is denied, what the next application might come before us, whether the use is more intense, greater mass, but I do believe that future application would nonetheless come back to some council at a public hearing or a DA modification, perhaps a rezon, and that council with that public can vet it at that time. So with the application that's before us for the reasons that have, were stated on the record earlier at today's hearing, I'm going to make, make a motion that we deny the DA modification request in application H2021-0094.
Second. I have a motion in a second to deny the applications. There's discussion on the motion. Quick call to roll. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Schrader.
Aye.
Burnt.
Aye.
Perrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Borden.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries, and the item is denied. With that, we'll move on to the next public hearing, item number two, which is for H2021-0092. We'll open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just give people a couple of minutes just to get out of the room. Thank you. As noted, item number two tonight is for 1160 West Eustick Annexation, located, go figure, at 1160 West Eustick. The application is free tonight for annexation and zoning. Site consists of 3.81 acres, currently zoned RUT in the county. It's on the north side of Eustick Road in between North Venable and Linder Road, so west of Venable. The future land use designations on the site are actually two as mixed-use community as well as medium-density residential. The annexation is only before you tonight is actually for four and a half acres, which accounts for the right-of-way that's required because you go to center line when you annex properties. Is a request for R15 zoning district, and it is for the purpose of constructing a future affordable housing, multifamily residential project by the housing company. As noted, the project site has two mixed, uh, future land use designations. Majority of the site is the mixed-use community with a sliver of medium-density residential. West Eustick abuts the site along its entire southern boundary, and it is relatively an odd shape. It's approximately 390 feet wide on its west boundary and only 90 feet on its east boundary. There are no public streets abutting the site except for, well, obviously Eustick, but other than that, no local public roads abutting the site except for Northwest 11th Avenue in the northwest corner of the site, which is, only has about 11 feet of right-of-way touching it. The northeast corner of the site, I guess, it's kind of hard to tell, but there's actually a property here that is zoned R8, was annexed and zoned with Woodburn subdivision, but does not take access through that site. It still takes access through this site through a private easement. Between this parcel and the Woodburn subdivision to the north and running along its entire north boundary, except for that property to the east, northeast, is a common lot owned and maintained by the Woodburn HOA, contains an irrigation facility of some kind. There's some dispute as to what it actually is containing, meaning the legal documents that the applicant has discussed with me does not match what our GIS labels it as, but it is some form of a irrigation facility. But it is, the property is owned and maintained by the Woodburn HOA. The majority of the adjacent parcels are single-family with the exception of the CC parcel to the east and shares about 90 feet of the property boundary. This property, which is Settler Square, recently received DA modification approval to include some multifamily townhomes in the north half of their site while keeping commercial pads along Eustick. Cross-access was required of Settler Square and staff is requiring it to be reciprocated with this applicant and the applicant agrees with that. In general, the property is a relatively odd-shaped parcel with its own set of challenges derived from previous planning decisions, meaning road placements, its dimensions and its general location. The proposed use for the subject site is multifamily residential. So the future use and a future conditional use permit with the, within the request at R15 zoning district is required. That would be subject to the specific use standards in 1143-27. However, the applicant is proposing this project with a couple of notable differences from traditional multifamily. First, the concept plan, sorry. And conceptual elevation shows six plexes and eight plexes, no more than two stories in height as opposed to three-story walk-up or other styles that we'd normally see. Their access from one side with the majority of the massing of the building facing interior to the site. So any neighbors would see more of a traditional sloped roof of a two-story home, to be honest. Again, not like a traditional three-story walk-up. Secondly, the applicant proposes the multifamily project to be affordable housing in the form of deed-restricted rents for the entire site. Staff finds the specific use of affordable housing, no matter the type, is a greatly needed use within the city and is essentially its own residential use. Staff has worked at the city attorney's office to propose adequate DA provisions to ensure the proposed use of affordable housing is maintained. As noted, the subject site contains two future land use designations, mixed-use community, medium-density residential. Staff finds the proposed use to be in line with, in alignment with both future land use designations. Furthermore, future land use designations are not always partial-specific, and when, when more than one exists. Sorry. Yeah. And when one, when, I can't speak tonight. In short, the city has allowed applicants to utilize one or both of the designations for the project site when both exist or more than one. However, in order for the proposed 52 affordable units to meet the gross density requirements, that has to be analyzed against the mixed-use community designation, which allows density at a gross rate of six to 15 units per acre. The subject mixed-use community area is located around a mid-mile collector and has minimal commercial uses currently developed. Previous applications in the area have allowed a reduction in commercial areas due to the viability of commercial being lower in these mid-mile locations as previously discussed. However, staff anticipates most of the remaining annexed land to the east, unannexed land to the east that is part of the mixed-use community bubble to allow for more commercial because they directly abut Eustick, which helps minimize that issue of not having visibility. In addition, as seen on the future land use map, the area to the north of the subject parcel was specifically carved out of this mixed-use community area to allow for more traditional residential uses. This choice, coupled with the existing sub-street locations and large annexed out parcels adjacent to the site, has created a site that cannot viably meet the fundamental goals and policies of other mixed-use community parcels. Minimal opportunities exist for shared spaces with other mixed-use community parcels, which is a big thing within the mixed-use community designation. And even cross-access to the CC parcel to the east is only attainable through that 90 feet of shared property boundary. Because of these constraints to the site and nearby area, staff does not find it feasible for the advocate to meet all the mixed-use policies or to provide additional commercial and should instead be an affordable multifamily development. Outside of the proposed use, the concept plan should also be land analyzed against the general comprehensive plan. The submitted concept plan depicts six six-plex units and two eight-plex units, all two-story in height, and the eight-plex buildings are only proposed along Eustick. So again, helping with building massing and transition from the existing single-family. Site is shown with a looping draw. Site is shown with a looping drive aisle due to the odd shape of the parcel and has parking in both sides with the clubhouse and playground in the center of the project. At least three of the homes closest to the subject site are two story in height. The applicant is also, sorry. Oh, boy. Oh, no. The applicant is also showing open space adjacent to the single family home to the northeast, which takes access via private drive. Along the west boundary, the applicant is showing a fifteen foot buffer that would be adjacent to a future road extension northwest Eleventh Avenue. The existing single family home on this adjacent property is located on the west side of the slot, approximately a hundred feet from the shared property lane. Therefore, staff finds the applicant has provided appropriate building massing, open space locations, buffer widths and appropriate transition of residential use and density to the adjacent existing residential uses. There is one existing structure on the property that appears to just be a large concrete structure and all structures on the site will be removed upon development. In addition, there is a existing five foot wide detached sidewalk along Eustick Road that will be protected and maintained during construction. Initial review of the conceptual elevations depicts the buildings with varying roof profiles and materials, including stone and fiber, cement lap siding, board and batten and different layouts. Access is proposed to West Eustick via a new via a new local road as known as Copper Lane. I think it's supposed to be Cooper Lane, actually, because lines up with the to the north. The submitted plans show this new road to extend from Eustick and then terminate the north property boundary for a total length of approximately a hundred feet. It's very short, obviously, so it doesn't require turnaround per ACHD. The reason why ACHD wants it as a public road is because they anticipate it to connect through the site to the north to the existing stub street on the north side of that property and potentially a future connection to the east will likely not though. And to correct myself, it lines up with Blairmore on the south side of Eustick, which is why the public road is proposed here. Access to the multifamily residential buildings are off of this new local street through a multifamily drive aisle. All parking and access to the proposed units are off of this drive aisle, which is at least twenty five feet wide. It only needs to be twenty five and not twenty six to thirty because they are only two story in height and less than thirty feet, which is a fire requirement. As noted, there is a small area of right of way, a very northwest corner for Northwest Eleventh Avenue. Again, it's only about eleven feet that it butts the site, a little less as here. Not where I would have put the road, but that wasn't my project previously. It is anticipated that this road would be extended wholly on the property to the west, except for this sliver of right of way. The property to the west has an additional public street stub on their west boundary from Tetheroe Crossing. Code calls for cross access between parcels, but because this proposed development already has site constraints, staff does not find it necessary to require stub from the west for future connectivity, meaning that if a public road were to come through this site, it would vastly take away a lot of area and where you would put that, it's not going to change where we'd probably end up wanting the road on the property to the west if that site ever redevelops. If we were to bring Northwest Eleventh directly down the north boundary, that is that ever going to connect to the south and probably just still require Northwest Eleventh to head south and then head west to Tetheroe Crossing. When we analyze this, it there wasn't a real benefit to this property, to this project, and then you end up with some kind of a real baggage road, a public baggage road along Eustick, which isn't necessary at this time. Further, staff does find if a connection were to be required, it would promote cross access through the drive aisles meant to serve the future residents of this site, would create more of a thoroughfare rather than a community feel within this project. Commission and council should determine if cross access to the west is needed in spite of these factors and staff's opinion or decision. A five foot wide detached sidewalk is existing along Eustick, as noted. The applicant is also proposing attached sidewalks and other micro paths throughout the entire site. The proposed sidewalks and micro paths will be analyzed against the UDC and other dimensional standards with the future CUP application. In addition to the existing sidewalks and the proposed sidewalk, staff did recommend an additional pathway along the north boundary. And there is some discussion on that, just a five foot wide gravel pathway along the north to go and help connect some of the sidewalk and or open space that the Woodburn subdivision has. Granted, they don't utilize it. It's just there. There's discussion at commission regarding that. I in no way want to hinge this project off of that pathway, especially when the applicant and I have discussed it with parks and they believe that the pathways shown, the sidewalks shown in here would be adequate for transition and or sorry, travel for residents to go west to east, east to west, including to the east, to the commercial at Settlers Park, that would be there in the future. So again, if council determines that that DA provision doesn't need to be there at all, staff understands. I do not want to have a project approved or denied off of that when they have the existing proposed sidewalks within the site. At the commission hearing, again, that was one of the points that was discussed. They also discussed whether the site will be managed twenty four hours and if it will be a age restricted development. It was my understanding from that discussion that it could be twenty four hours, but more than likely be on call and, you know, part time maintenance, part time leasing person. In addition, there's discussion on it would not be an age restricted development. Also discussion on staff's recommended additional gravel pathway, which I hope I also just clarified. How does staff envision Cooper Lane and Northwest Eleventh being extended in the future, which I hope I address Northwest Eleventh, but feel free to ask clarifying questions. Cooper would again head due north through the property to the northeast. Lastly, there were some discussion on the parameters of the project that are more or less important due to the proposal ID's being for affordable housing in lieu of market rate. And to that point was more about my discussion of the mixed use community standards and whether or not the cross access, whether or not commercial would be something that would be pushed for if it was market rate versus affordable. I I try, I hope, I think I answered it better at commission hearing than I probably will right now, but what's proposed meets, at least conceptually, because I dove into the dimensions, but meets the proposed use standards, meets the condition or meets the dimensional standards for the proposed zoning district as well as the mixed use community standards. That discussion that I had was a lot more about if these are market rate, would we, do we need more market rate apartments in lieu of a hundred percent commercial or in lieu of a few single family lots and then commercial versus what's before me now, which is affordable housing, which is what we need in a lot of different ways. So it's more of a give and take, more of a, I don't design these projects again, but more of a this is what I'm reviewing now and I don't find it necessary to make them meet a bunch of or all of the mixed use policies on three acres when sixteen acres generally cannot meet and will not meet all of the mixed use policies. Following that discussion and all these points, the commission did recommend approval of the project with the request of the applicant work with the Woodburn HOA to the north about that pathway. There was some discussion on that that I know of that the the HOA has met with the applicant, but there has not been a decision made. But again, I I will not push and say this should be denied if we do not have a five foot gravel pathway. There was no written testimony as of about three this afternoon, but I did look, there was one in support of the project. And following that, I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Joe. Counsel, any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
A question for Mr. Nary and you'll have to forgive my my ignorance, but is are affordable housing apartments assessed at the same rate or value as market rate apartments? I mean, I guess I'm not aware of if, because it's affordable housing, if it's assessed at a different value.
Mr. Members, you're talking about the county assessor on the property value. I mean, that one I I don't know because normally they are really just assessing buildings, not necessarily what the building's value is or what they go for if they fail. I know they look at that, so I know there's a factor in there, but I couldn't tell you specifically that that has a greater or lesser impact on the property.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perrow.
May I answer that question?
Sure.
If there's a deed restriction, if the affordable housing is limited by
Can you speak into the mic?
If the affordable housing is limited by a legal deed restriction, it will affect the value of the buildings and their saleability to the public and or investors. If the units could be converted back into market rate, it's likely not going to affect the value of the structures.
Is the applicant here? Like to come forward? You say your name and address for the record. Be recognized for fifteen minutes.
Good evening. My name is Erin Anderson. I'm with the housing company and I live at twenty two thirty eight North Estarway in Meridian. I'd like to just start by answering that property tax question, if that's all right. So you're correct, and the value really would depend on the restrictions. And in the short answer is that yes, we pay property taxes and there there would be property taxes on this. It takes an income driven approach, so they would look at how much income the property has to determine the value and then assess the taxes. So but they are, you know, they are significant taxes that we pay on every affordable housing project. There is a state statute that does provide an exemption for nonprofits, but it only applies, it specifically says it does not apply to projects that utilize the low income housing tax credit, which is the majority. I would say it's ninety nine percent of what we do. So only one percent or less of the projects we do would qualify for the tax exemption. And most of the work that's done in the affordable housing industry right now involves that tax credit that does not qualify for the exemption. Okay, so moving into the presentation here. For anyone that was at the planning commission meeting, some of this may be a repeat, but bear with me because I know that council members may not have been there and so I'm going to go over some of it again. We did finally give the project a name, so it's not just beloved sixty West Eustick. We named it Wood Rose Apartments. Little bit of background about the housing company. We're a nonprofit organized in nineteen ninety with the mission to address the concern of inadequate supply of affordable decent rental housing within the state of Idaho. And recently we've added Montana as well. We play an active role in bringing affordable housing resources to areas of the state not being adequately served. We form public private partnerships and utilize creative housing solutions to really figure out how to tackle the the problem of affordable housing. We've developed more than eight hundred units in two dozen affordable rental communities. We have professional property management as well as development and long term term ownership within our company. We're located in Boise. We're a local company and we own our properties for the long term, taking pride in building an asset for the community. We're able to put together complex financing in order to meet these significant challenges. Our nearest developments are Moon Valley Apartments and Star, Nampa duplexes and Hazel Park and Caldwell, and we currently have Canyon Terrace in Nampa and Sunset Landing in Caldwell under construction. So a question I often get is what is affordable housing? What do we mean by that? There are a number of affordable housing programs, but the most common one utilized today for new construction is the IRS program section forty two, the housing tax credit or also known as the low income housing tax credit. This isn't the same as what people think of as subsidized housing or section eight. With this program of private investor such as a bank or insurance company as examples will become a partner in the project and provide equity to the project in return for ten years worth of a federal tax credit. The residents must be income and program eligible. The rent is based on a fixed rental fee, so once they move in, it it their rent doesn't go up and down if their income changes. So if their income increases, they still have to pay that rent when they, that was established when they move in. It's really important to keep in mind that the quality of a section forty two affordable housing development is going to be in this should be indistinguishable from any other apartment building. We require income verification, criminal background checks, credit checks, student status verifications and household composition verifications. Okay, so there are two types of section forty two. And I added something to the agenda here that wasn't in your packet. I apologize for that, but I need to discuss that there's these two paths because we've recently discovered that one, that we need to explore both paths. One of them is considered a non competitive tax credit. That's the four percent housing credit. And the 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 situation with the non competitive four percent credit is that that's the one that we would prefer to use for this project. However, it's heavily reliant on additional gap funding. And in particular, we were really counting on state American Rescue Plan Act dollars to to go to fund part of that gap, which is currently under discussion at the state legislative session. And because of that, we were really hoping we'd have some answers on that by now, but but it seems like it's going to take a lot longer than we were hoping. So we have to bring up this second path at this point in time, which is the nine percent housing tax credit. The nine percent is the incredibly competitive process that goes through IHFA every year. Essentially, one third of applications get funded and every applicant is ranked according to a number of different scoring criteria. And the reason I wanted to bring this up is that one of those scoring criteria requires us to consider mixed income because points are associated with providing mixed income developments. And what it amounts to is if we end up having to go through the path of the nine percent credit, we'd likely need to have six out of the fifty two units, which is eleven and a half percent, be not income restricted. So those would be, they would not have a restriction on those six out of the fifty two. The reason that the IHFA's qualified allocation plan has this provision is because mixed income housing is seen as a way to facilitate or preserve economic integration, create well maintained and amenity rich housing for low income individuals and families and increase community acceptance of affordable housing, particularly in higher income neighborhoods. So that's the impetus for that. And I wasn't, I didn't intend to like it wasn't intentional that I didn't bring it up sooner. It's just that I didn't really think we were going to have to even consider this path. But I think it's important now as we're getting a little bit further along to bring it up. And to be honest, having those six units at slightly higher rents actually does not help the project cash flow by itself because we'd actually prefer the equity that's associated with those being affordable housing units actually generates more. The equity dollars are greater than the rent dollars, so it's not really helping us to make them market units. Aside from the fact that it's an all or nothing proposition. All right, so here's a few examples of some households that could, you know, just to give you an idea of of income levels and rent levels. So we have a single person in customer service around thirty thousand a year with a one with a one-bedroom at $741 a month. A single person with two kids at $38,000 with a two-bedroom at $946. A three-person household at $45,000 with a rent of $1,089. And a four-person household at $43,000 with a rent of $1,089. Those rents include trash and water and sewer. These are some photos of other developments we've done. This one is in McCall. It's called The Springs. This is Moon Valley and Star, which is the most similar to what we're proposing here. The elevations that were in your packet are derived from Moon Valley and Star. And that brings us to our site plan. I think Mr. Dodson did a very thorough job of describing a lot of the overall planning issues. The only other thing we added, this is also an updated site plan that I just received today, but it shows in the southeast corner, a, we're working through irrigation related to retention. So we're showing irrigation retention pond on the southeast corner there. Other than that, it's the same as what he presented. You know, we really, we really did our best to work through some of the circulation and connectivity concepts to make sure that this, this is an infill site, and it really, really wanted to emphasize and enrich the advantages of an infill site, which is that it's in a walkable community. And then regarding the recondition on the path on the north side. So I just want to clarify that we did approach the HOA for Woodburn. And I didn't meet with the HOA. I rather, I had a phone conversation with their, the professional management company that the HOA hires. I had a phone conversation. She told me that their board is very active and I should send her the materials, which I did. But I have not actually heard, I have not received a response back from them yet. So that's something I'm still working on. But we'd like to request that you consider removing the condition for the additional path along the north boundary for the following reasons. The first one is that the likelihood that the Woodburn subdivision HOA is going to agree to us putting it on their property seems very low to me. I think it's a great idea. I just, just realistically, I don't see them wanting to have to deal with it right now. It's, it's going to bring up who's going to maintain it? How is it going to pay paid for? And we'd have to get an easement from not only the HOA to the north, but also the single-family residents to the west. If it's on our property, it's too close to our buildings. We, Keith, our architect, who's here with me today, created this section to illustrate how close it is. It's about seven feet away from our building and right now, we're showing landscaping. That's why there's a tree right in the middle of where the path would have to be. And then the little box that's sticking up is a air conditioning unit. And the only other place we can put the air conditioners would be in the front of the buildings. Right now, they're in the back. The other option was, that was brought up, was could we move the buildings further south to make room for the path? But that would mean that we'd have to eliminate having a fence along Ustick. Right now, we have a fence around the entire property for privacy, including along Ustick, and if we if we do this, we wouldn't be able to have a fence along Ustick because there wouldn't be adequate setbacks to meet the requirements for having a fence there. We also have concerns about the feasibility of maintaining a gravel path so that it looks good. In order to do it right, it really feels like it would need to be paved with concrete or asphalt, which would be very expensive. This is about 4,000 square feet of pavement if it's five feet wide. Here are some photos we took. We did some drone photos to show you the area. So this, the section, you can kind of see a little drainage swale. And frankly, our our civil engineer is still digging into it, but right now we're under the impression that it's actually a drainage ditch more than anything else. We're not able to find any tiling inside of there. And we think it was just historically a drainage ditch. I did, I tried to zoom in. Here's another angle. And there isn't much more of my presentation. I'm probably getting close on time. Here's another angle. But I tried to zoom in, and here's up close of the connection point to Woodburn. You can see how shallow that ditch is. It's basically nonexistent. And I tried to zoom in here a little bit too, to show, if you can tell, I'll just tell you, it's very shallow basically throughout. There's not a lot of water that's going to be contained with the existing ditch, and, and we can't seem to locate any tiles so far within it. So I, I don't really see it being like a water feature because it doesn't really seem to be serving that neat, that purpose right now. And it's just not a super attractive area so far, which, you know, if we connect our sidewalks on our site plan to this area, we would certainly improve it with, with additional landscaping to make this look a little nicer. But I just wanted to give you a flavor of what it looks like right now. And that it's, it's not a, it's not a deep canal, really. It's not much to really look at at all, to be honest. Am I out of time?
You are.
Okay. This is just the timeline and probably not important for us to go over it right now, but a lot of it's dependent on getting through our CUP and funding applications, and I'll wrap it up since I'm over time. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor?
Catherine Hoppen.
Ms. Anderson, in light of your timeline, any idea on that, you know, when you talk about the 4% funding versus 9%, any, any guesses to what the state's going to do, what their timeframe is that they're going to? Or is it completely just not known at this time?
Well, hopefully, hopefully, we'll have an idea before the end of the legislative session, so probably by the, by March. So right now, we just don't have the answers, but we should know by the end of March what direction they're going, unless they extend it into like a, you know, they add additional time onto the session to discuss it. Hopefully, that doesn't happen. Yeah.
Councilman Pro.
I have a few questions for you. Specific to the 4% versus the 9%.
Yeah.
4% that's related to ARPA funds that's going to be used not as a subsidy, but as a tax credit for the builder. Is that right? For your company? Is, is that not going to expire at some point as ARPA funds?
The ARPA funds expire? Is that where you're asking about when the ARPA funds expire?
Yes, versus when, if you were to go with the other option of the 9%. Is that something that has to be reapplied for on a regular basis, or is that a permanent?
You have about two years from the time that you're allocated to complete construction.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So first of all, thank you very much for considering bringing affordable housing to Meridian. We have had a lot of discussions. I actually got a call from a local journalist last week, asking if I knew of any affordable projects that were coming into Meridian and wanting to understand more about affordable housing, which I appreciate our media community having that conversation. So my question for you is if neither applications are approved and we annex this property into the city of Meridian, what happens?
Well, the way that the the recommendations that were put forth include a deed restriction in the development agreement, so as currently outlined in your, in your information there, there would be a requirement to have affordability provisions on the property, even if, even if for some reason we're unsuccessful. That's how it's set up for your consideration. You know, which honestly is pretty unique. In my experience, in 17 years, I haven't at, at a zoning and annexation stage encountered that. But that's, that's been the recommendation, so you know, our, the reason we look at a Plan A and a Plan B is because we're very persistent in seeing things through. It's, for us, it's not a matter of if, but when. And and that this, the capital stack might change depending on what happens with things that are out of our control, but we know we have a couple of different ways we can look at it. We know that it's going to be affordable housing, whether there are six units or, you know, six units of, of non-restricted housing or not. I don't think that is enough to detract from the goal of creating a significant amount of affordable housing within this development. And either scenario would create something that is in such high demand for what is needed here.
Ms. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Is the deed restriction or requirement that you need to have in place for what you do, or is that something our staff recommended?
We do. Well, we, we already do. And that's, that's something that's part of the tax credit program, that it's required that we record deed restriction. With, you know, so that gets recorded regardless of whether there's a deed restriction in the development agreement. Yeah. So it's kind of just a double, doubling up.
Councilwoman Cover.
In one of your slides, you identified, Kenny, a four or essentially tenants in kind of one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, or four. The, the projected rents that were at the bottom, is that what you're targeting then for this facility?
Yeah, those are the targets that I'm working with right now. And I think, you know, every year in April is when HUD establishes the new, or they collect all the data for the new income limits. Income limits lag behind about one to two years from actual information. So they're going to tend to be lower than what, what the actual incomes are. But anyway, yes, that's, that's what we're targeting. I haven't provided a full, like, full rent matrix with every unit detailed yet. Mostly because there are a few of these things, you know, still being worked out. We still have to do a formal market study. We still need to really drill into the specifics on on exactly where, you know, what it's going to look like, but those are, those are generally a reflection of what I have currently in my performa. Yep.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Board.
Follow up on Councilwoman Pro's question. In this scenario, it might be really unlikely, but if a project like this is annexed, the application goes forward, and if the application is denied, the project wouldn't get built. That'd be a fair assumption. The application is super requisite really to make it all pencil in light of the rent restrictions.
Yeah, so if that development agreement gets recorded and you, you know, somebody's going to have a hard time making things work if they don't, if they're not an affordable housing developer. So that is something that we, our current contract with our, with the current landowner, unless we negotiate something else, says that we need to purchase the property by June 1st. And we would, at that point, you know, be purchasing the property and would own it. We currently do not, though. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't want to record that document tomorrow, if you will, until we actually purchase the property because the current landowner would, you know, they would want us to buy it before it's recorded.
Councilman Board.
The reason for the question of if that funding application, which is necessary to make it pencil and become affordable housing, the project wouldn't otherwise get built, most likely, absent receiving that funding from the tax credit.
With either, yeah, either one of those tax credit scenarios, correct?
If, if a project like this, I don't know if it's ever happened before, but if something were to go down that path and the, the funding application, if that was denied, does your entity then, if it owns entitled property to build X, but it doesn't have the funding to build it in a manner that allows it to be rent restricted, does it then spin that off and sell it in the private market and allow some third-party developer to try and construct it without rent control?
To my knowledge, we haven't done that yet. I know I personally haven't done that yet. I've only been with the housing company for a year and a half. The housing company's been around 30 years, and I've been doing this for 17 years. And I've never sold property back onto the market. So it definitely would not be a common practice. You know, but this is, this is one of those things, I guess why the DA provision is in there, is to prevent that in the very, like, from our perspective, it would be very unusual. Like I said, I've literally never done it. Yeah.
Councilman Pro.
Follow up on that question. Has it, have you not had to resell property because you're always getting your requests approved, your applications approved, or if you not had to resell it because your company just holds on to it and continues to reapply until you do?
Typically, it's been that we don't buy the property until we know we've got the funding applications approved. That's the norm. Because of how aggressive the market is right now, we have to do things differently. We wouldn't normally be buying things so far in advance. So it is, it is different times. You know, we can't, we can't always do what we did before, which is to expect a seller to wait as long as we need to, to get these applications done. So it's usually been that we're confident that we can buy a property because we've already got the funding secured, and that's not always the case these days. Just in, just in the last couple of years.
Council, any additional questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody set up to provide testimony?
Mr. Mayor, nobody signed up.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody either in the audience or online that would like to provide testimony on this item this time? Sir, if you'd like to come forward. Say your name and address for the record, and you'll be recognized for three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Eric Pugmire. I live at 869 West Woodpine in the Woodburn subdivision. I generally am in favor of this development with a couple of things that I just wanted to mention to this group. If you're thinking about approving it, one is what she said is correct. The Woodburn HOA, I know the members pretty well. They're probably not going to be really interested in sharing a green space and maintaining it and helping pay for that any more than they would want to help us pay to maintain our open spaces in our neighborhood. So the path along the north side of the subdivision, or the development, I would say, is really not necessary, and if, if And if, if there is a fence going up around this development, and I would encourage that as part of the development. In general, I am appreciative of what the housing company is trying to do. I work in the building materials industry and was directly involved with supplying material to the Moon Valley project. That turned out to be a pretty nice project despite all of the, of the negative, i- if you will, publicity that preceded it. And so generally, I'm in favor of that. I would just ask that you consider the, the homeowners in the area around it. We would love to maybe have a further dialogue with the actual HOA board members. But I'm guessing you're going to find that they would prefer to see a fence around the development rather than a path. And so with that, I don't have any more time. I just wanted to share that with you. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel, any questions? Thank you. Is there anybody else either online or in the room that'd like to provide testimony on this item? I can't tell if that's a, our admin online or we only have one person who's on Zoom, if you'd like to provide testimony, you use the raise your hand feature. Seeing nobody with the app, like to make any final comments? Applicant, no, no more comments of this? Okay. The council, I'll turn this over to you for any questions, comments or direction.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
I have a question for, for Joe. Just two things I wanted to clarify. One, the, that common lot that has the ditch, that is owned by the Woodburn homeowners association and managed by them?
Yes, ma'am. Part of the easement, I believe, is on both properties, but itself is owned by the HOA.
And so that northern pathway would utilize the easement and be on that property or on the subject property?
Subject property.
And one more question for Joe. So I had sent Joe an email earlier and in which he had responded. And can you go over that with, so my question was, the, the property to the, immediately to the west is about a little over an acre and a half. And it's sandwiched between this and another development that was recently approved last year. And I have a lot of concerns that that will create, cause that parcel to be, will devalue that process, parcel from future development. And if you could go through your thoughts on that for me. I, you know, I don't know what to say because the owner obviously hasn't sent in a letter or come to the hearing, but I just want to make sure that we're having that conversation.
Yes, ma'am. The property to the west, again, has a little over acre and a half with the anticipation of Northwest Eleventh coming straight south. And basically right away would be a budding the entire east boundary. It's forty-seven feet of right away. That's typical for a local road as well as the east-west street, which I don't know the name of it from Tetheroe Crossing. Again, forty-seven feet of right away, you can see the plenary lines on our maps for that brush, that property. You're probably going to get at least three lots on the south side of that road adjacent to Eustick. If they match the same lot sizes in Tetheroe. And then you could match at least six lots on the west boundary on the west side of the road that's on the east boundary of the site. I should have drawn this, but I'm not an artist, but the, you'll probably get nine lots, give or take in this one and a half acres, which would be perfectly fine within the existing R eight zoning district and the future land use designation of medium density residential. They could get more if they reduce the lot sizes and went or did a common driver too. So the, the number of lots could definitely increase. So I, I don't, you know, I'm not an economist, I don't do valuation of property at all, but I do not anticipate that it would become less valuable. Um, on a more not planning side, there is an existing cell tower on the site. And it's my understanding that usually when homeowners have that sitting on their lot, they don't redevelop because they're getting to cash a nice check, as is untouched with no city parameters outside of what they have. So there's not a lot of anticipation that that will be redeveloped in the near future. And if they do, I, I do think that there's ample opportunity for that L-shaped backwards L of a road being extended to the site and still having required frontage, required building size or building lot size as well as the landscape buffer.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
And so what, what would the requirement be? This property, we're not, this property were not requiring cross-access. Would that, the size of that also prevent them from requiring cross-access to either properties east or west? Or would they have to have a road that runs in between Eleventh Avenue and the Teethrow, Teethrow Crossing? They're, like, is it going to cut that property up because they have to have that cross-access?
It would, I guess, essentially cut off the little small piece along Eustick from the rest theoretically, yes. Because, you know, you have to deed these over via plat. But no more typical than what Tetheroe did if they happen to have a lot line somewhere near their east boundary. It would have been this, it's almost going to be a mirror image of that. Which that'd be the most efficient use of their space. But even if this site, if we're required cross-access through this site, what I'm envisioning be the road layout through the site on the west, I think it's going to be the same. I don't, and we would, we're, they have to extend Eleventh based upon what my discussions with ACHD were is they, they do want that extended. And then they have the substrate from Tetheroe, which they're also going to want extended. So there's not going to be a way to get around that for that property owner regardless. If we required Eleventh to come down into this property would probably kill the affordable component of the project. And it would more than likely be split down the property line, which only nets that property, you know, twenty-five feet, give or take. And that's not really, that's not going to get them more lots in order to get them more in the pro forma. That's not, that's for sure. Now, again, with the other layouts that could happen within the site, you could bring Eleventh and bring it down to Cooper. And a lot of weird things can happen. I don't think that'd be an efficient use of that. I don't think ACHD would want that either, but it, I think what's proposed makes sense. The only caveat would be you could, council could require with the future CUP that this applicant shows a driveway connection to the west boundary for a future connection to Eleventh. But I, my only issue with that is if there would be cut through traffic, people not wanting to get to Eustick through their portion of it through Tetheroe, they'd want to go east and maybe to settler square through there and the commercial there. And I, I just don't, when you have the backing up of driveways through there and then you have the ability to cut through, you know, I, I just don't think that's good planning practice or for safety purposes. Usually apartment complexes, you're going to want, want the traffic to be somewhat self-contained until they get to the main roads. I don't, I don't want to make their driveway all one of those thoroughfares.
Mr. Mayor, one question.
Councilman Pro.
Uh, can you share with us the, the deed restriction that, that you've suggested in the DA? And, and how that, what the benefit would be of having that, if it's necessary or if it was just a suggestion? And, you know, I understand the city, I guess I don't understand the city completely needing to regulate that. Like why, why we would need to have that as a condition? Um, and then also if you could comment on if they don't own it until sometime in June and we were to approve an annexation today? I mean, can we delay that long and, and signing and, and recording a DA agreement that far after an annexation approval?
Yes, ma'am. We've, Mr. Neri and I have had these conversations and also with, with the applicant. There's, to the second point, yes, we will not approve, or we shouldn't, I think we have in the past, but that was a mistake. We will not approve the annexation ordinance and the zoning ordinance until the development agreement is returned and signed to us. And they have six months from the approval of the findings of this to get that back to us. Unless they do a development agreement modification, which is then a de facto time extension of that. So they do have time and that six-month window is there, which, you know, again, put us in July-ish. I can't do math, August to, to get us, hopefully get their funding and get everything set up. And that would also give them the out from now until June in case, hey, it doesn't work, then they can bail out and no harm, no foul. In regards to why I put it in there is specifically because, kind of like I talked about with meeting mixed use or not, do we want more market rate apartments or do we want affordable housing? Do we want market rate and commercial or do we want affordable? I think affordable housing trumps both of those in the context of the comp plan and the city's needs. Especially when you talk about in the best interest of the city, which is a question that is incredibly subjective in my opinion, uh, whether it meets things in code or not. It, it came down to that and needing to say, hey, we need a DA provision, not just what they're telling us is going to be deed restricted, but saying that we need something in the DA saying that, yeah, this site plan, this proposal, this number of units, we want to be affordable. If that doesn't happen, do I want this site plan, this number of units, this layout to be market rate? And the answer would probably be no. So would there be other things anticipated with that? Yes, therefore we are going to put a DA provision in there. And that's just, as we all know, typical of annexation, that's the only chance we're going to get. So if we're looking to ensure that it's affordable, now's the time to do it. Um, I did revise that language from the original staff report and then I think even at the commission and then after that to show that, well, some of the discussions that we've had with the applicant, some of the discussions we've had internally about what that language should be like as we gain more knowledge of their funding and what they are required to do. So hopefully that's been a little cleared up and gives them a little bit more of an open pathway with what they got to do and how they can operate this in the future.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Neri.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I can add on to what Joe said. The idea of the DA provision was my suggestion in our meeting with Ms. Anderson. And she did raise the fact that that was an unusual request and that they hadn't seen. It isn't a, it, it isn't a concern to the city, or at least to my department or planning, that they will build something else. That's not who they are. I mean, that's just not their business model. But as you know, in these DAs, as Joe said, the business model is really what's going to drive it. It's really difficult for us as a DA to catch a lot of these things on the front end. It's usually at after the fact, we'll get a complaint, someone says this isn't affordable, like it says, I thought it was supposed to be, we're going to investigate. The, 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 the benefit of this type of project is that we don't have to do that if the housing company or a like company owns it because other people regulate that. Other people are, are verifying that it meets those standards of affordable housing. So that helps us on the administrative side. But when we had this, the meeting and discussion with the housing company, again, we discussed that the city would like to see some level of assurance. A deed restriction can be changed without our input. A DA provision can't. So again, it's something that provides some level of assurance. Again, I don't, I have no doubt that they will build what they said, or, or at least attempt to build what they said. The built-in timelines that they have could meet their business where they have six months. There's an ability to get an extension, there's ability to get some time. DA, again, as long as they can move forward where it isn't annexed until the DA is signed. And the DA won't be signed until they actually own the property. And at least at the time of the meeting we had in December, that was a timeline that could work. And so that's why we landed on that direction of this. And, and I'm fine, I'm good with Joe's language. I think, I think it still meets our intent. And we wanted to provide a level of assurance because as Joe stated, if this was something different, this may not be the ideal project. If this was a simply a market rate apartment complex, it may not meet the standards we've have held to others. This, when we felt it was okay to adjust slightly because we felt the quality, what's necessary and needed is the type of, of living units, not necessarily a lot of the other types of mixed use. That was the reason for it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holland.
Mr. Mayor, real quick, Bill, is the language structured such, she went over the nine percent and four percent that allows six units to be market rate in this situation with that language?
Yeah, I'll have to double check because I don't, I haven't looked at it since, since that issue, but I think, I think it's okay. Again, I think, again, the ideal part is someone else is regulating that too, not just us. So that, that's going to be helpful.
Councilman Shrier.
Yeah, I mean, I, just to comment. I've been dead set against annexations, but darn if we haven't found one that I like. I, I don't want to lay all of the many problems that we're having with growth and growing pains at the feet of the affordable housing folks that have a huge hill to climb in their funding and all of their challenges. Um, I think for this one, I am supportive because of the deed restriction and the DA restriction, if it was market rate housing, I don't think I'd have any interest in this location. And then I guess my other comment would be, I think it's warranted to accept very small properties from the bigger, you know, kind of food fight on data with West State School District. This is very small infill development. And previously, when we've paused things to work things out with other issues, we have exempted small parcels of this size. So I think it serves an important purpose in the community of providing affordable housing that we really need. And I just hope that everything comes together and they can get it done.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Joe.
Thank you. You sound so happy to say that. The DA provision that's existing does not account for potential market rate apartments, market rate units. Just because I, I didn't get that information until recently, so I didn't include that in a potential language change. If the council, you know, it sounds like we might need that provision, I can, we can wordsmith that, Bill and I will be able to add that. But if any, if you move to approve it, make sure in your motion, just add that you want staff to work with legal to get that provision buttoned up for that, to include that additional component of potential up to six units, I would say, per the applicant of market rate units.
Hasn't been.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
Before we move on, I just had a quick question about the fence, Joe. The, the, Mr. Pugmire mentioned something regarding the fence instead of having a shared, you know, whatever, you know, open space area. Would staff be am- am- agreeable to what Mr. Pugmire recommended?
Councilman Burton, uh, sure, yeah, absolutely. The, if they did a pathway, we wouldn't want the fence just because we would want that area to be shared and traversed universally there. But if, again, I'm not going to hang this whole project off of a five-foot wide pathway. I, if residents want that and the applicant currently wants just the fence and some more of that privacy of, instead of the gravel or whatever pathway, I'm perfectly fine with that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
I would just have whoever makes the motion maybe include that in the motion as well. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, to that point, noting that, noting that Parks and Rec, you know, said the interim sidewalks are adequate. That doesn't seem like to be any need for that gravel pathway, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holland.
I would move that we close the public hearing on H twenty twenty-one dash zero zero nine two.
Second.
I have a motion a second to close the public hearing. Is there a discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, aye? Be ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holland.
It's not often we get to talk about affordable housing, workforce housing. And that's kind of exciting. So it's not like the old days when it was government housing. This is a win-win where government provides some tax credits for private industry to come in and build a quality product and maintain that asset for long-term. And, and it, in the process, it, it helps people who are out there working and, and just need something that's more affordable, especially in the market that we've seen right now. And also with a, with a piece of part property that is very difficult to work with, the, the shape of this thing makes it tough and I applaud the, the work that you guys put into that to, to make it work. And planning staff and legal and in trying to find ways to make it all come together. So much appreciated. So, Mr. Mayor, I would move, after considering all staff, applicant and public testimony, to approve H twenty twenty-one dash zero zero nine two as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of February one, twenty twenty-two. And with the removal of the condition that the path, gravel pathway be put in the, along the north boundary, boundary, that it be removed. And also that the applicant and work with legal to create language in the DA to allow up to six units if necessary for the work credits that they are seeking.
Second.
I have a motion a second. Is there a discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
I, I, I'll be in favor of this. Sorry, can you hear me now? Thanks, Dino, appreciate the heads up. I, I actually, it's not often when we have these discussions. In fact, it's probably the first time that we've had this discussion since I've been on council, that's been five years. housing, real affordable housing for those who stand in need, workforce folks, those who are struggling. We certainly have that in our community. A lot of times, you know, for this to pencil out and for this to work, they need help from municipalities. And, and in this case, this is going to be handled and, and funded, you know, through the housing company and, and what they're going to do, and the funds that they will receive from, from other, other government entities, et cetera. So I just wanted to say thank you, and this project, in my opinion, is much needed in our, in our city.
Are there any other comments? Only thing I would add is I, I do hope that the state legislature takes serious action related to this topic. I know the governor's put forward something that they're considering as a body, and hopefully they'll move forward so people know what the, what's available here in the state of Idaho.
Yeah, agreed.
With that, call the rule.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Strater.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Pro.
Aye.
Gavner.
Aye.
Borton.
Hovland. Aye. All eyes, motion carries, and has agreed to. With that, we'll move on to our last bit of business this evening, on the ordinances. Item number three is ours, number 22-1965, asks to correct, read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an ordinance related to paraplace subdivision H2021-0056 and H2021-0091 for annexation of a parcel of land situated in the southwest quarter of Section 27 Township for North Range 1 West Ada County, Idaho, including lots two and three, block two of Black Cat Estate subdivision number two, instrument number 870382, records of Ada County, Idaho. And being more particularly described, attachment A, and annexing certain lands and territory situated in Ada County, Idaho, and adjacent, and contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Meridian, is requested by the city of Meridian, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of 10.01 acres of land from RUT to R8, medium-density residential zoning district in the Meridian City Code, providing the copies, this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission, as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance and providing for a waiver of their reading rules and providing an effective date.
Thank you, counsel. You've heard this ordinance read by title. Was there anybody here that liked it read in its entirety? If not, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselman Pearl.
Move that we approve ordinance number 22-1965 with suspension of rules.
Second. I have a motion, a second, to approve ordinance number 22-1965 under suspension of the rules. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it, and the ordinance is agreed to. Next item up is ordinance number 22-1966, asks to correct, read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. It's an ordinance also related to paraplace subdivision H2021-0056 and H2021-0091 rezone, for rezone of a parcel of land situated in the north half of the southwest quarter of Section 27 Township for North Range 1 West Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, establishing determining the land use zoning classification of 6.99 acres of land from R4 Medium Low-Density Residential Zoning District to R8 Medium Density Residential Zoning District in the Meridian City Code, providing the copies, this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission, as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance and providing for a waiver of their reading rules and providing an effective date.
Thank you, counsel. You've heard this ordinance read by title. Is there anybody like it read in its entirety? See, now do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselman Pearl.
One of these days, I'm going to say yes. I knew that we approve ordinance number 22-1966 with a suspension of rules. Second.
Have a motion, a second, to approve this item under suspension of rules. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it, and the ordinance is agreed to. Counsel, anything on their future meeting topics? Or do I have a motion to adjourn? Move to adjourn. I have a motion to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it. We are adjourned.
Liz.